Good afternoon. It's 2:35. Today is Monday, the 2nd of November. I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order. We are in work session. This is our regular city council meeting. It's a bit unusual because it's the first week of the month, but we do that in November and December, and it's even a little more unusual because it's a Monday. But we decided that today would be a better day than Election Day. So here we come, live at you on Monday afternoon. So we have a work session that's posted today, followed by an executive session, and then our regular business will start this evening about 4:45. We have one item in work session, and that's a presentation from our communications and marketing team. Before I go to them, I'll invite the city manager to make some comments. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. City Council, Ms. Lacy Nobles will make her way up to the podium. Of course, Lacy and her staff have been quite busy. She's got some new faces that she'll introduce. The other half of her staff is here. They're kind of behind the magic wall today. But council, we thought this would be a good opportunity to show you, number one, a new opportunity that we have for our citizens to interact and interface with us, and second, to report on some other improvements that have been made through social media, the website, maybe show you some traffic counts. We've had a very busy year in that regards, as you might imagine. And with that, I'll turn it over and ask Lacy to jump over to the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Good afternoon, council and Mr. Mayor. Like most departments, we've had many changes to navigate since the beginning of COVID, and during this time, we have adopted and adapted some new practices and products. And the one we are most excited about is the MyLbk app. The Communications and Marketing Department and 3-1-1 have been working since 2015 to create an app where citizens can report through and one type issues. So I want to thank Mike Keenum, the Engineering Department, Brandon and Jared, and IT, and especially Sue Moreno, the Supervisor of 3-1-1, for making this happen. So, beginning on Wednesday morning at 9 o'clock, we will be publicly launching our MyLbk app. And it's an additional resource for citizens, a more modern option in addition to the traditional 3-1-1 call center, as well as the Citizen Portal online. But the app is available right now. It just hasn't been made publicly, it hasn't been announced publicly, but it's available in the Apple Store, the Google Play Store, and it's free to download. And here is a quick video. There's no audio in this video, so it's letting you know. But this is what it looks like when you launch it from your device. So on the main page, it offers links to city of Lubbock resources. You can pay your utilities bill. You can get Citizen Convenience Centers through solid waste information. It's a one-stop-shop for citizens to get information. But the most importantly, there's two ways to make a request report. There is the button at the very top or the plus sign at the bottom of that page. So the new request page allows users to upload a photo or a video of their request, which makes the process more clear and efficient for them and for city departments. The request page also has a map view, which allows users to view their area and to see if another citizen has already requested the same service or reported something. So this cuts down on duplicates and is more efficient. And right now, the departments receiving the reports, there's no way for them to weed through the duplicates. But this system will actually flag it for them as a duplicate, so they don't have to waste time responding to the same thing. The notices page allows viewers, users, to view notices regarding their requests, and they will also receive emails as their request goes through certain steps. The current online porter that we have, users have to register, and they have to register to use the app as well. This cuts down on bogus reports, but also allows them to track the progress of the report, which they have never had before. So it fosters transparency within the organization.
So if a citizen is logged, is signed up for our emergency warning system, will they, will their same credentials work here, or do you have to sign up again?
It's totally different. It's a totally separate app. But our online portal system that we have now for 3-1-1 requests, users have to register. And the new, this new system will replace that system starting Wednesday, and they will just register again. But if you register online, your, or the same credentials will work for this app. Okay, so here is our app announcement video that we will launch on Wednesday. Notice a messy pothole, out of control weeds, ice lord, graffiti. Well, now, there's a app for that. The city of Lubbock, My, or the Pay App. You can request services for court issues straight to the city. Write for your advice if you can track the progress. MyLbk can also give you other city of Lubbock information by the cycling centers and local parks. It's now easier for members to connect to your city. Available now for Apple and Android. The MyLbk app can keep you Lubbock connected. So we will launch that at 9:00 AM on Wednesday. We'll push the announcement, the video, to all of our social media platforms. Channel 2, we will release a news release, and we'll follow up with a how-to video, how to make a request, that will follow Friday at 10 o'clock. Another product and service we've been using is the Bitly URL Creator.
Before we, before we leave the app, let's open the floor for any questions on the app or comments on the app. Anybody? Mr. Massengill?
Well done. I think it's especially cool that you could look at the map and see all the geography of all the reports. It'll be as good as you communicate it out to everybody. That's the key.
We're actually going to boost it for a few weeks, re-releasing the information and making it available, making it available for anyone if they want to come get trained with us within the organization.
So I've seen some of these apps that all I have to do is take a picture and send it to you. Is that the way this works? It pulls embedded information? Do you know where the pothole is from the embedded information? Is that correct?
Yes.
So I don't have to register anything? I can just send it to you?
It needs to register, so you can track the progress of your report.
What if I don't care? What if I know you're gonna take care of it?
You can be anonymous. You can be anonymous.
No, I know you're gonna take care of it. I just, I mean, because I think a lot of people aren't gonna register. We can, we can filter out if we've had multiple requests of the same thing. I just, I just want to make it easy. I think registering is hard. I mean, we, we all registered today by looking at our phone, right?
Right. Like most apps, most people register. And you can still call 3-1-1 in the, online. You can add a picture online if you do it through the online portal with this new system.
I don't want to call anybody. I just wanted to do it on my, I just wanted to send it to you. I don't have to call anybody on this, right? I can report it on the app?
No.
Okay.
You can just do it with a picture and be anonymous.
So whose, whose platform is this running on?
It's C Click Fix.
C Click Fix?
Yes. Other cities, like I know Abilene uses C Click Fix, but there isn't customized to Abilene.
Okay.
We opted for ours to be customized to be, look like Lubbock, look like our logo.
Right. So what's our, what, how often, I mean, what's their commitment to us about how often they update it and all that goes along? Make sure it's new, ready with new versions of Android or Apple?
We'll pay yearly. We do it annually. Yes, but they are available with us anytime for feedback. I communicated with them throughout this whole process. They were with me whenever I needed anything.
Cool. And why did you pick them?
Thank you. I picked them because after y'all made it a priority of yours at your last priorities meeting, it was very easy. Engineering was using Cartograph, looking at Cartograph as for their asset management system, and C Click Fix came as a part of that and made it easy for us to integrate all of it.
So what makes it better than MyCivic, or the, so there's a handful of them out there? What makes this better? I mean, other than it came with something else? It's not a good enough reason. What else made it, what makes it, what else makes it better?
This was a good choice for us. One, because it was going to integrate with what our other departments were going to use. It makes it very easy. We've trained all the departments that get the reports anyway from a 3-1-1 call, and they love it. They love the interface, the dashboard. They think it's a whole lot easier than what they're currently using.
Okay, what about on the inside? What about our people? Is there a different, do their requests come in differently? I mean, like, is this going to be pushed out to every phone that we, cellphone that we pay for in the city?
No, I hadn't thought about that, but I could.
I mean, that's 2,000, that's 2,400 of us right there. Not everybody gets their, has their own cellphone. But, but, I mean, to me, that would be the first place that, this would not only go, but it'd be required, hold on, it'd be required for them to use this, right? Because we, we drive my stuff all the time, that we don't want to pick up the phone and bother somebody with a phone call. But if we have this, we can do it on the spot.
Yes. That's a great idea.
So what's the plan, what's our plan? What are your thoughts on that? And then we'll let the city manager talk about that after you.
I think that's a great idea. I hadn't thought about that. But I did think about letting the intern, like putting all this information up on Click as well.
Okay, you can see I've just been, I've been ready for this. I've been building up questions. So Jared, what are your thoughts?
Some excellent ideas. We can absolutely have this pushed to all the city cells. I want to go back a little bit to why this platform, there are numerous out there. There's some locally developed, there's some commercially developed. We looked at quite a few of them, Lacy and her team did. I really think over time, the integration into that asset management system is just going to be huge for us to be able to do that. And with that integration, I think it also makes it that much more usable when it's city staff that's running the stuff into it and through it. So we'll certainly make that happen. I don't know that I can commit that every city cellphone we own is upgraded enough to actually run this, but the ones that will, will do so.
Sounds like a great opportunity. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Just have a quick question. While more and more people have the smartphones, not everybody utilizes them thoroughly, what's the big draw to make someone like me who might get it, might, might have some apps on there and might not? What's the big draw for me? Because with us having this, of course, we'll want as many people to use it. What's the big push for me to use it? And what would be a big deal for me?
I think for some, it's just the more modern aspect. For people who are more, use their phones for everything, they can just take a quick picture, and that they can track, I think for everybody is that they can track the report, that their report's just not going to some black hole, that they can see the status of it, that it's been acknowledged, that's been, it's been assigned to someone, and that it's been closed, and that they get the updates on that. That, for me, is the biggest deal in all this, that no, there's been no way for citizens to track their report through 3-1-1, online, or the phone system, ever.
So it actually helps, is a better way to access the city's information, instead of having it go to your desktop or whatever that folks like us, that, I mean, myself, that actually has. So it makes it a lot more accessible. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes. And on that front page, you can get your, link straight to city bus routes and schedules, and the landfill information. You can even find city jobs, quick links on there. Or you can call 3-1-1 directly from there. Different hotlines are listed on the main page. And that can be changed at any time if there's some things that you all or anyone thinks that should be listed on there.
Because while we were sitting here, I put the app on my phone. So, and I'm not a big app girl. I'm really not. But I, I know that there are other folks out there like me. And of course, we want to push to make sure that everybody uses this and helps them understand that it is a lot more friendlier. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Any other questions about the app?
I'll make one more comment. Again, I think it's awesome. It's only as good as we respond. And if we, and its reputation will precede itself very quickly if we don't respond. So hopefully y'all have all the, everything tied together internally, because if it is, then it's going to be successful.
I agree. We did many weeks of testing, and actually, each department had to let us know what the escalation due dates were for each type of request or report. So if they got a weeds report, after three days or four days, or whatever they decided it would be, it would be escalated to the next tier of management in that department. So to ensure that it's getting taken care of.
Mr. Atkinson?
Yeah, I think Ms. Nobles covered that well. This provides an accountability to these types of requests, that we've not really had a very good manner of doing that before. This does not replace the traditional 3-1-1 system. It's in addition to. And as Lacy's pointed out, if you go no further than to download the app, you can actually hot-button on that front page, and you can get ahold of the street department. You can get ahold of RHR people, the 3-1-1 people, and we can change those. If we have buttons on that homepage that they're just, there's no traffic coming through them, we'll take them off and put another department on there. One that I think's going to be very helpful is we have animal services on the, on the homepage. So we do get calls. There's been, there's a loose animal in the area of, you know, whatever it may be, 34th and Utica. Well, with this, if they'll just take one more step, we'll know where they saw that animal. And we've got a lot better place to start to see if we can get there and help. It'll have a few growing pains. The internal part of it, I've been able to see how it tracks through those departments and opens and closes. We're looking forward to it. It's going to be helpful.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Ms. Joy, then Mr. Christian?
Do you have the, the initial launch video telling people how to do it?
We have a how-to video made, and we're going to launch that Friday. I don't have it here, but I could send it to you right after this meeting.
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea to send it to us.
I can send that to you.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know it's maybe sound like an oversimplification, but the fact that it's mobile, that, you know, how many times when I'm driving around in my district, and I want to talk to somebody about weed control, or whatever is on this phone page, that instant access for our citizens to, to go to that and report something without having to look for a phone number? I mean, I think this is so important for us to push out and make sure that we do above and beyond to let our citizens know about this app, because I think, like most of us, or a lot of us on, up here on the dais right now, we tend to use our phone more and more for everything, and use even our laptops less all the time. So simply, the simple fact that this is mobile, it's in your hands, but be sure and pull off to the side of the road before you dial and move forward. But I think this is really great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. I was practicing down here. I took a picture of Mr. Griffith, and I, then I clicked on aggressive animal, but I didn't send it. I just want you to know. I was just, I was just practicing, okay? I'm not registered. I couldn't send it yet. I tried. Yeah, that's right. Okay, this is exciting. That's good. All right, Lacy, please continue.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have the Bitly URL Creator. This allows the Communications and Marketing Department to create mylubok.info links for any URL, including non-city links. So it's easier, so those big long ones with all the letters and characters, we now have very short, easy links for citizens, and it offers analytics to monitor user engagement with these links. For instance, council, I updated these numbers after I sent you the presentation. But the short link for today's council agenda had 134 page views since 8:30 this morning, 96 from Facebook, 25 from Twitter, 13 from emails or tech shares. It can also tell us what time all this happens. So it's a lot, it's good for us in tracking user engagement, but also it's a lot easier for citizens with this short link. Okay, now to our website, mylubok.us. In the two and a half years since its launch, our website has evolved into a more dynamic resource for citizens. We have new examples of really engaging pages this year that have been extremely popular with citizens, and that's the Lubbock Safe page, the Emergency Communications page that we use a lot during EOC activations, the COVID-19 dashboards, COVID-19 page and dashboards. And now we have, with this new system that we've had for two and a half years, we can use GIS interactive maps. We use that for the mayor's marathon, the triathlon, and all types of things. Since January 1st of this year, we've had 4.3 million page views with over a million users, and you can see most, all of those are new users to our site this year.
Maybe you're going to answer this question on the next slide.
I might.
How does that compare to, like, since last year?
Same time last year. Well, here's something kind of crazy. When we moved to this new system, it took a while for the company that moved, that created our new website to move our stuff over to, to be able to be tracked with analytics. So it started on May 1st of last year. So we did the analytics of May 1st to November 1st of last year compared to this year. And last year, we had 1.6 million views, and for this year, we had 2.7 million views.
Okay, thank you.
For those same six months.
Okay.
So our top five sites since January have been, not surprisingly, the COVID homepage by a lot, and then our main homepage, the department's page, the health department homepage, and the LPD homepage. Yours might say, I updated this as well, the COVID exposure sites page, but we decided to take that out of, because we don't even update that anymore. Moving beyond Channel 2.
So before you leave website, council, any comments or questions on the website? So, Lacy, when you look at the website, it's a couple years old. It still functions well from a search capacity capability. I know that was one of our concerns before. Are we, are we going through and making certain that data's being maintained? And are we killing those things we don't need anymore, the pages? I mean, who, are we responsible for that? Because I know that the previous website got to the point where it was so cumbersome, it was very difficult to navigate. And that was before your time. But what are we doing to make sure that it's staying up to date? And then what, what do you, are there things that you see that's, that we're missing that you'd like to have us, to have added to our website?
I think, well, the first question, each department has someone that they have designated to keep the, their specific websites up to date. They go through training with Terran, and when someone new is hired, they do that. So they are, they're responsible for their own department, and it's actually worked very well. I think our department, we are, like the Bitly, currently constantly trying to find ways to keep it engaging and keep it easier for us to track the movements. And I know that IT has been looking in maybe a different platform as a search to keep the same operability, but just a different company. But I think, all in all, it's very easy. It looks great on mobile. I mean, it's very, I think it's a very successful website.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to Channel 2 and beyond Channel 2. We used to just stream live events via Facebook, but not everybody has a Facebook. So now, we'll, we continue with our video on demand, like this meeting, and that is mylubok.us/video. But now that we've been using Zoom predominantly, we can stream straight to YouTube, straight to Facebook Live. It makes it so much easier on us, and it's just, it's another way to, citizens can watch our content. And that's all I have.
Mayor?
Mr. Massengill?
So do we, do we Zoom, do we broadcast these meetings on YouTube?
We do. We get them up usually the morning after.
So they're not live?
They're not live on YouTube, but they're live on the channel, Channel 2, and live on mylubok.us/video.
So why not live on YouTube?
We don't have the capability right now, but we will. We're getting a new system that goes along with our closed captioning that will be coming. It's all part of that together.
I know I've gotten some comments on, they've gotten accustomed to the press conferences on Zoom, and then they want to know why they can't watch us. I mean, press conferences on YouTube via Zoom, and then I've gotten calls on, why can't I see the council meeting on YouTube? So I think it's a, a platform that when we get the opportunity, we need to broadcast live on.
It's coming.
Okay, cool.
Any, anything else for, from Ms. Nobles?
That's all I have?
Good work. You guys are doing a good job. Thank, make sure, some of your teams here, thank you guys, but make sure the rest of, they can hear us, we know.
They can hear us. They're making it work.
We appreciate those guys, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council, I believe that's our only item for work session. We do not have a, I don't believe we have any polls. Is that correct, council? Okay, no polls. Any questions for staff on items that are on the regular agenda? All right, so... The city council today will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreements, and hold consultations with attorneys under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, and to, to discuss commercial or financial information as it relates to economic development under Section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code. It is 3 o'clock. The Lubbock City Council is recessed to executive session. It's 3:52. The Lubbock City Council has returned from executive session. We will now recess until the beginning of our regular meeting, which should commence, scheduled to commence around 4:30. We'll actually start probably about 4:45 this evening. Lubbock City Council is recessed. Good afternoon. It's 4:49. Call the Lubbock City Council to order. We're back from our recess. Our first item tonight is, our first ceremonial item is our invocation, followed by our pledges. Tonight, our invocation is being led by Dr. Barry Stevens with Monterey Church of Christ. Following his prayer, the Mayor Pro Tem will lead us in the pledges. If you would please stand.
Let's pray together. Our Father in Heaven, we first of all acknowledge you as God. We lift your name above all names. We give you thanks for the multitude of blessings you bring to our lives, your grace and mercy and faithfulness, and especially the gift of Jesus, who brings us peace and hope and joy and love. And I pray, God, just as Jesus demonstrated love and care toward us, that we in turn demonstrate that same kind of love and care for one another. God, thank you for the privilege of living in this community and in this country. We pray your blessings upon our land. As we anticipate, an election day tomorrow, we pray for peace. We pray for your will and your wisdom to prevail. We pray, God, no matter what the outcomes of an election may be, that you will help us to be a people who put our trust in you. God, we likewise, in the midst of an ongoing pandemic, pray blessings on each of us. We pray fervently for an end to this pandemic. We pray for folks who are struggling with the virus. We pray for folks who have lost family members and loved ones because of the virus. And again, God, we pray that in the midst of walking through this together, that you give us the courage and the wisdom and the care for each other to truly love each other by our behaviors. Tonight, God, in particular ways, thank you for the men and women before us who serve our community, for our mayor, for the men and women on the city council, for their love and devotion to our community. I pray wisdom to guide their conversations, their deliberations, their decisions. And again, God, in the midst of a community and a world where so many different opinions are voiced, I pray that your peace prevails, and that even in the midst of disagreements, that we will love and respect and care for each other. And so, God, I offer this evening to you, and pray that you are honored and glorified by what happens tonight, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Will you please join us in the pledges of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Thank you.
Dr. Stevens, thank you so much for opening us up tonight with prayer. We always love having you here. We appreciate your words. We have a number of citizens who've agreed to serve on... We have a number of citizens who've agreed to serve on city boards and commissions, and I've asked Councilwoman Sheila Patterson Harris to do the honors tonight. Sheila.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope everybody can hear me, huh? I talk loud enough, I don't know where I get it from, but I, we have several appointments. I'm going to do you individually, that way we can do the social distancing and all that good stuff. Is that all right?
Yeah, good.
Sheila, before you go any further, we need everyone to find a seat, please. Thank you very much. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Patterson Harris.
All righty, we'll get started. We're going to be handing out these little doodads here this evening, and it says, City of Lubbock, Texas. It says, greetings, the members of the city council, reposing special trust in the integrity of whomever we're talking about. And we'll indicate what that board is, and we'll say yay really loud. Is that all right? I'm going to call forth Ms. Nancy Neal. If you'll join me here, Ms. Nancy. As she comes, the City of Lubbock, greetings, the members of the city council reposing special trust in the integrity of Nancy Neal. Hereby appoint to the airport board to act within the jurisdiction and authority prescribed by the City of Lubbock in such capacity. It's confirmed the second day of November 2020, signed by the good mayor and the rest of us who serve on the council. Let's thank Ms. Nancy for her willingness. All righty. And we're going to do the same thing for Ms. Eliza Norris. And we hereby appoint Ms. Eliza Norris to the building board of appeals to act within the jurisdiction and authority prescribed by the City of Lubbock in such capacity, again, on the second day of November of 2020. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve. Sheila. All right. Another greetings this evening. Let everybody get a seat, because I don't want to steal anybody's thunder. And it is the members of the city council reposing special trust in the integrity of Tracy Benefield. Hereby appoint you to the Health and Education Facilities Development Corporation to act within the jurisdiction and authority prescribed by the City of Lubbock in such capacity, again, today, November the 2nd, 2020. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve. All righty, we going on down. We having a good time, aren't we? All righty. Again, we're going to call Mr. Mike True Love forth. Is he in the building? Yes, he is. As he comes, we're going to hereby appoint him to keep Lubbock beautiful, to act within the jurisdiction and authority prescribed by the City of Lubbock in such capacity, again, today. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve. All righty. We've got a trio next, but we have two of them here. So we want to make sure we get both of these folks here. I'm going to call Adam, Abel Hernandez, I don't know if I said Adam, Abel Hernandez and Renee Cage, as they come. Says, City of Lubbock, Texas, greetings, the members of the city council, reposing special trust in the integrity of Renee Cage, Abel Hernandez, hereby appoint to the planning and zoning commission to act within the jurisdiction and authority prescribed by the City of Lubbock in such capacity, again, today, November the 2nd, 2020, signed by the good mayor. And there's a few other folks that we kick it with. Just want to say a special thank you to these folks, because you don't have to offer your time. We were so appreciative that you've done so. One of the things that have been important to me, that we have citizens get involved, and this is definitely one way that you get to do that. So thank you so much, and blessings to you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. We, I want to echo the same comp, thank you that she did. We have 50 something boards and commissions. We couldn't do it without you guys, so thank you very much. Taryn just walked out, but if some of you have families here and would like to get a picture with their certificate, I bet we could, Bob, could you help make sure we can get that done out, out front? Maybe that we could, as you leave, if you'd like to do that. Thank you, family members, for coming tonight, and thanks for being willing to serve, and we'll give you a chance if you, unless you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, we'll give you a chance to slide out right now. I think Dr. Neal wants to say, so Nancy, you may have to come back and get him. Okay, council, if it, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and then catch the minutes, and then come back to citizen comments. We're at 4:59 right now, and that'll give us till 5:00. We want to give anybody that would like to speak a chance to sign up until 5:00. So it's 4, it's 4:59. I'll call the Lubbock City Council meeting to order. This is our first regularly scheduled meeting of November. Today is the 2nd of November, 2020. We'll move to item 5-1. It's on page 10 in your agenda. It's the minutes from our October 2nd, 2020 special city council meeting at the electric utility board, and our meeting, our regular city council meeting on October 13th, 2020. These minutes were included with our agenda book. Counsel, is there a motion to begin consideration?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chitas, for the motion, Ms. Joy, for the second. Are there additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed by that same side. Okay, that motion carries seven to zero. We will now go to citizen comments, and we will ask if someone could get Mr. Goodwin to bring in our, our comment sheets. Here he comes, right here, it appears. Thank you, chief. Okay, we'll move to citizen comments. We have, we have a, let me just go through the guidelines for citizen comments first. Citizen comments operate under council rules. Any citizen wishing to appear before the regular meeting of the Lubbock City Council regarding a matter posted on the agenda tonight shall complete the sign up form provided at the meeting no later than 5:00 PM. Citizen comments are, are limited to three minutes. They, you'll get a warning when there's 30 seconds left. Now, there's 19 people that have signed up to speak. They're all on the same item. Let's make sure that we're clear on this, it's on item 613. We're not considering that ordinance tonight. All we're doing is considering a resolution that makes the petition valid. We are having a public hearing two weeks from tomorrow night, and we'll consider the ordinance at that time. That's on the 17th. Once we accept the petition tonight, or verify the petition, we have 30 days to have that public hearing and to hear the ordinance. And it's our intent to do both of those on the 17th. So comments tonight will be only allowed pursuant to us passing a resolution, which is on our consent agenda. It's not even going to be pulled off the consent agenda for extra discussion. That means it's a, that's sort of a way of saying it's going to get passed, it's a done deal. So if you can keep your comments just to that, that's fine, but if you won't, then I will, I will ask you to, to sit down, okay? Because this, the public hearing, and it's a passionate, there's passionate people on both sides of this issue. We realize that. Nobody realizes that more than we do, because we hear from you, okay? And we read those emails. But we're not going to have the public hearing tonight, okay? All right, so make sure we're clear. First to speak is Victoria Nelson. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Okay, so to clarify what you just said, this is basically whether or not you guys are going to consent to a petition that was...
That's, that's all that's on the agenda tonight.
That's all?
Yep, that's it.
Can you tell me how many signatures were on that petition?
This is, you're the comment, this is not, this is not a, it's a one-way, it's a one-way, you, you're here to comment to us. It's not a, we're not to have dialogue in citizen comment.
Okay, not a problem. So, the people spoke, there were enough signatures, it should be passed, right? We're not allowed to speak about the topic, because this is just about the petition. Okay, I really wish that would have been clarified on the city website, because it takes all of the 19 people that did come here to speak about the topic. There's no point in us speaking.
You're going to have your time to speak. I mean, remember, remember that, that's correct.
That wasn't announced online?
Yeah, it was. It's in the, it's in the, it's in the agenda book that was put out last Thursday afternoon.
Okay.
Okay.
Well...
Public record last Thursday afternoon.
Okay, so...
And some of us talk, I even said it this morning on the radio, and made it very crystal clear as to when the public hearing was going to be.
Okay, then I will continue my talk then.
Thank you.
City of Lubbock has spoken. We will also...
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Susan Williams is next. Good evening, Ms. Williams. If you, I didn't ask, I didn't ask Ms. Nelson, but if you'd read your name and, and address for the record, please, before your comments.
Yes, my name is Susan Williams. My address is 6013 71st Street, Lubbock, Texas. Again, this may, I have about one minute, and you can stop me if, if you need to. I just ask, ladies and gentlemen, that you, you do look at the subject of abortion through the lenses of your faith. Deuteronomy 30:19 states, "Today I have given you the choice between life and death, between blessings and curses. Now I call on heaven and earth to witness your choice. Oh, that you would choose life, that you and your descendants might live. It has been said that a righteous governmental expression is to speak on behalf of those without a voice. That being said, I just ask that you please consider the eternal consequences of your decision, quite simply, it's life or death."
Okay, but that, that, that has nothing to do with what we're considering tonight. Your points are well made, but that's not what we're discussing tonight, okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
If you have anything about what we're discussing tonight, we're open to that. Otherwise, you're at, you're out of order for what we're doing tonight.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dorothy Boyett.
Thank you, mayor and city council people. I'm Dorothy Boyett, 5226 73rd Street here in Lubbock.
Good evening.
And I thank you for, and I thank the city secretary, Ms. Garza. She's done a lot of work on going through all these ordinances, and I, I mean, the resolutions, and I know how much work it is, because I did it before we gave it to her. And, you know, I would just like you to consider, not only did we hand in more than 5,000 copies of people's signatures, but I was outside playing paranoid today with a sign, and everybody that went by was giving me thumbs up, they were stopping and saying they're all for this. I was really amazed. And these were people from all walks of life, and all sexes and colors and everything else, whether they had fancy cars or cars like mine. They were all, you know, just saying, we want this to be passed. So thank you for considering it, and I do appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Boyett. Thank you for all your work, too. Okay, next is Linda Norman. Ms. Norman?
Hello, distinguished mayor, distinguished council. I'm Linda Norman. I live at 2712 81st Street in Lubbock, Texas. I just want to thank you for what you're going to do tonight, and I'll table my comments for the public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for being here tonight. Next is Jim Baxa. Mr. Baxa?
Good evening, Jim Baxa, 5711 North Interstate 27. But y'all know that already, don't you?
Excuse me?
I've been before this council before, y'all know exactly where I live, don't you?
Yes, sir.
And, you know, I have not been back before the council in a few years now, even though there's been a lot of issues that touch my heart that y'all deal with, and I own property in the city, so I, I do care a lot about what y'all do. But since I don't live in the city, I, I've not been back before y'all since the annexation battle we had, and, but I'm, I'm back today, and I'll be back the 17th as well, because abortion is the most important issue in the world. We're talking about life of little babies here. And I, I was very involved with the petition gathering, behind the scenes, doing all the paperwork, and I'll tell you, it's a lot of work. It is a lot of work. You know, before Ms. Garza was able to review them, we reviewed them all ourselves and made sure she had all the VUID numbers that made her job a lot easier. So it's a lot of work, and I was shocked at the amount of support in the city for that work. Now, I really wish y'all had just put this on the agenda. Now, I really wish y'all had just put this on the agenda yourselves. And, you know, we're on the agenda now because we forced it on the agenda. You know, with the amount of support in the city, I think that the council should have been more representative and put it on the agenda earlier. Now, the Texas Opening Meetings Act requires that y'all let us speak, not just on an agenda item.
But that doesn't, Mr. Guard, Mr. Baxa, this is not, Texas Open Meetings Act, our council rules work inside the Texas Open Meetings Act. We're not going to have that discussion tonight, okay? It's something that's posted on the agenda for consideration. All we're considering is a resolution verifying the petition.
Right. But what I want to bring up is the Texas Open Meetings Act does require that we be able to speak to omissions on the council agenda.
Yes.
That's the word that the Open Meetings Act uses. We can speak to an omission.
That's incorrect.
I can show it to you later, Mr. Griffith.
It's incorrect.
Okay.
Please, please continue, Mr. Baxa.
All right, that's what I had to say today.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Mr. LJ Wright. Mr. Wright?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, my name's LJ Wright, 209 Stadium Drive in New Home, Texas. We recently, I'm the pastor of New Home Baptist Church in New Home, Texas, and we recently passed this ordinance, this enforceable constitutional ordinance in New Home. And I'm very, very glad we did. I first want to say that I believe that every one of your positions are ordained by God, and I very much respect each and every one of your positions. I believe that a sovereign God put each and every one of you in the place that you are today. And I, I just want to bring to each one of your, your minds that I don't think any of this is an accident, these ordinances that are put before you today, and I'm very grateful that you are considering these ordinances. And I do want to bring up just kind of something for everybody to think about as we all consider these things, just the gruesomeness of abortion, the sofa clamp that rips a child limb by limb.
Mr. Wright, Mr. Wright, you're out of order. That's not on our, that's not on our agenda tonight. You can speak to the petition, you've got to restrict your comments to that.
Okay, okay. I, I'm just, I guess I'm, I'm having trouble understanding the parameters here, so I'm just, I'm, I'm capitalizing on my time and, and letting you guys know what I, I think is true.
You can speak to the petition and what, what we're considering tonight.
Okay, so, I, I just want each and every one of you pleased to consider, even as you, you go to bed tonight, that innocent blood will be spilled if this ordinance is not passed in Lubbock. And I do believe that your positions are ordained by God, and I do believe that each and every one of you will have to give an account for, for what happens. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, preacher. Lynn Harms?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In light of your clarifications, I withhold my comments until the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Harms. Good to see you. Mark Lee Dixon. Good evening, Mr. Dixon.
Good to be here today. My name is Mark Lee Dixon, Director with the Right to Life of East Texas and Founder of the Sanctuary Cities for the Unborn Initiative. Been involved in all of the cities that have passed the ordinance so far, and specifically today, of course, I'm speaking on item 613, which is to consider a resolution received from the city secretary, all papers received on October 13th pertaining to a petition and proposed ordinance, seeking amendment to the City of Lubbock Code of Ordinances. And just to clarify here, because I know it's been stated elsewhere, but it wasn't stated specifically here, like I saw elsewhere, but what this ordinance is that we're talking about in this resolution that, that people signed the petition for, is an ordinance which would, would immediately outlaw abortion within the city limits of Lubbock, Texas. That, that is what we're talking about here, and that's the, the signatures are tied to that ordinance. That ordinance is something that many citizens have really deep and passionate beliefs on, and they believe that this is something that the city council should address. And today, you guys get that opportunity to receive this petition about this ordinance which would outlaw abortion within city limits of Lubbock, Texas. And this ordinance specifically says, which is tied to the signatures that have been signed by the people, the citizens of Lubbock, Texas, that specifically says that there is no right to abortion in the Constitution, that nowhere in the Constitution of the United States...
Mr. Dixon, Mr. Dixon, speak to the petition.
I am.
No, you're not. You're not. You're talking about the ordinance.
The petition is tied...
You're talking about the ordinance. Speak to the petition, okay? That's all we're considering tonight.
Right.
Is accepting a petition.
Absolutely.
You could talk about gathering signatures.
Right.
You could talk about the process. You can talk about your, your support.
Right.
You can talk about the city secretary's office.
That's what I'm talking about.
No, you're talking about the ordinance.
Well, it's...
You're talking about the ordinance.
Okay, so people signed, citizens of Lubbock signed, what did they sign for?
They signed to support a petition.
To support an ordinance outlawing abortion within city limits.
And we're going to hear that on the 17th.
Absolutely, I'm...
Good.
Can I continue what I'm saying here?
As long as you stick to the petition. If you don't, you're out of order, okay?
Okay. Well, this...
You have 30, you have 30 seconds.
The Sanctuary City for the Unborn, the calling of Lubbock a sanctuary city for the unborn, which this calls for is tied, of course, to outlaw abortion within the city limits. And I think it is the most pro-life thing to do, to pass, to receive these tonight, and on the 17th to outlaw abortion within city limits.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. We need, Mr. Dixon, would you read your address to us, please?
Longview, Texas.
I need, I need more than, I need more than that. I need a street address, please.
Uh, Longview, Texas is good enough.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
No, it's, it's, it's not. I need at least 100 block of a street.
Longview, Texas is good.
That's Tanya Allen.
I'm sorry, Tanya, I'm, I'm sorry. That's my bad.
It's spelled like Tanya.
I'm sorry.
Pronounced like Tanya.
Okay.
6123 23rd Street, Lubbock, Texas. Thank you for receiving the petition papers. I am one of many that went around and circulated the petition and gathered signatures. We, we brought the petition to our church and at least two Sundays, and I, I took it around to everybody I, I could think of that would possibly sign it because I believe very strongly in this ordinance, which I will address on November 17th. But, thank you for receiving the petition, and please keep in mind that, as it has been said before, there was a lot of work that went into getting the signatures. There were hours and hours that we spent verifying the signatures, putting down voter registration numbers. We tried to save you time, Rebecca. I hope we did.
[inaudible]
Good, good. We tried, we couldn't get through all of them. We wanted to, but, and we tried. Anyway, thank you for receiving the petition, and I look forward to addressing you on November 17th.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all your work. Next is Mitchell Cochran.
Mitchell Cochran, 906 Milwaukee Avenue, 79416.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, Mayor, Councilwoman, Councilman, I just want to thank all of y'all for receiving this petition, as has been said previously. We know you have a lot to do, so it does mean a lot to us that y'all are going to receive it. I say thank you to the city secretary as well and the city's office for doing their due diligence because we don't, we want to be legal here. I'm glad that it is, that's going well. I want to just openly acknowledge the tension that's in the room. Our movement is not anti-pope, anti-council, we are pro-life. So I hope that any tension that y'all feel, we, we're not directing it directly at y'all. We are trying to just simply do what we think is right. Finally, I ask that you all prayerfully consider the petition and the work that went behind it and the ordinance, and strive to do what is right in the light of morality and conscience, reason, and God. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cochran. Please, no clapping or jeering, we want to be able to hear what's going on. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Cochran. Now, it's Catherine Cochran, Ms. Cochran? Good evening.
Hello, Mayor. My name is Catherine Cochran, 906 Milwaukee Avenue in Lubbock, Texas. I want to thank y'all for your patience, but I want to thank you especially for accepting or passing the resolution to, to vote on the ordinance later, and I know you're hearing this over and over and over again, but I want to thank you on behalf of Raiders Defending Life, which, excuse me, which I'm a part of with Texas Tech University. Raiders Defending Life would like to thank you for your work, for going forward with this legally, for considering it, and for receiving the resolution tonight. We, we appreciate it a whole lot, and for all the effort that y'all put in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cochran. Appreciate you being here. Next is Eric Baker.
Evening, Mr. Baker.
Good evening. Eric Baker, 6403 32nd Street, Lubbock, Texas. On the same, uh, accepting of this ordinance, why I'm here, I didn't really know what I wanted to say. I've been over there trying to figure out what I wanted to say. Right off, I want to thank you guys for your service. One thing in, in considering this resolution and accepting this ordinance is this is a really tough position. I know what you guys do is tough, especially when stuff like this comes along. And so, my thinking on it is, right off, this is a beautiful thing that we're doing here, yet there's tension, but it's a beautiful thing that the citizens of the state of Texas, United States citizens such as us, can stand before our elected leaders and actually talk to you about the issues that we hold dear. And one thing to remember as you consider this, we're not asking you to consider some sort of anti-American, anti-constitutional, prospective ordinance, or even a socialist law. And I say this in light of what we all stand before tomorrow, and the kind of things that we all are debating as citizens and has us very deeply divided. This is not that. This is God-fearing, Constitution-believing, American citizens, Texas citizens, who are concerned for babies. Take that into consideration, please, as you go forward with this, because you will have more decisions shortly, even though that decision is not now. And my request would be that you prayerfully, prayerfully seek God in how you go forward with this. And whether or not this is constitutional according to the state constitution, I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, but I do think it behooves all of us to do whatever we can, whenever we can, to do the right thing, especially for the innocent. Seek God in this. That would be my only request to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Next to speak is Leslie Jaber. Leslie?
Hi, Mayor and Council, and thanks for having us here. And I live at 4721 22nd Street here in Lubbock. And I also circulated the petition, and I had many friends, family, people on the streets, people at church, everyone wanted to sign it, and I could have gotten a lot more signatures, but I was limited on time. So, it's just a really important issue to us here in Lubbock and in West Texas. Also, I'm an RN, my husband's a physician, and we both highly support this ordinance, and most of my friends that I know do, too. And I just want to say that, well, President Trump is the most pro-life president that we've ever had, and I, it's just my hope that we can say that we have the most pro-life city council. So, that's my hope and my prayer, and this is just an opportunity for us to stand up, be strong and courageous, and stand up for what's right and for the right to life and the right to be born. Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. All right, next to speak is Heath Galloway.
Thank you. My name's Heath Galloway. I'm at 2101 East County Road 5800, Lubbock, Texas, 79403. It is right outside of the city limits. I do have, I am a small business owner here inside Lubbock. And I'm just basically here, I haven't ever addressed the council before, but just to show my support with the regard to receiving this petition, because I really think it has a, a big impact on, on, on the entire city, and, you know, especially I, I don't want to see a dark shadow cast over the community, over the city. So that's my concerns, and I'm just here to show support for this.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Galloway. Next is Sandy Cisneros.
Good evening.
Sandy Cisneros, 102 Avenue M, Lubbock, Texas, 79401. I also helped circulate the petition at my church, so I was very grateful and thankful that I was allowed to do that. I just want to thank you for the resolution, and I'll table my comments till the 17th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cisneros. Next tonight is Kim Barnes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for listening to us today, and most of us have never been in this spot before, so I'm very grateful for your grace and for allowing us to come before you and learn the process. I would like to table my comments, but again, I would like to echo what others have said. We appreciate you letting us come and speak, and we'll be back on the 17th.
Thank you so much. Good to hear from you, Ms. Barnes. Okay, next is Cheryl Gonzalez. Ms. Gonzalez? Evening.
Hi, Mayor and City Council. I'm Cheryl Gonzalez from 3207 20th Street. I'm very thankful that we have the petition finally before you, and I'm very thankful for all of the citizens of Lubbock who signed the petition. It was literally a grassroots effort that was done in two weeks, which is incredible to think that we got several thousand signatures in that short amount of time. And I'm just thankful to the city of Lubbock and to y'all, and we'll be back on the 17th to let you hear more.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Okay, next is Linda Christian.
Linda Christian, 8302 CR 6950 Lubbock 79407. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here. Thank you, appreciate the process that we have. Have a great deal of respect for you and what you do, and I just want to speak up on behalf of the petition and the resolution, and we'll be back on the 17th.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Christian. All right, finally tonight is Monty Christian.
Monty Christian, 8302 CR 6950, Honorable Mayor and Distinguished Council People. Thank you for affirming tonight that you are moving forward with consent. I'm not surprised. I've been a longtime promoter, as you know, Mayor of Lubbock, for many, many years. I'm very proud of this city, very proud of Texas, and I'm proud of the people that are elected to these types of positions, and you listen to your citizens. We know and understand, as you've heard from many tonight, this is going to be a weighty decision for y'all. So a lot of people are rooting for you, too, we know that. And again, I would thank you. The only suggestion I do have, if there's something in between here and the 17th that would help the council maybe make your decisions, I don't know what kind of roadblocks might be there, legal fees or whatever, I don't know if there's a process for that to be addressing to help any decisions other than just the vote on the ordinance or petition.
Thank you.
Thank you again, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Okay, that, that concludes citizen comments for this evening. Council, we'll move now to item six on our agenda. It's a consent agenda. It begins with item, item 61 tonight. Council, there are no, I don't believe there's any pulls from the consent agenda. Let me just confirm one more time that that is correct. Is that right? No pulls? Okay, so just as a reminder that the, the consent agenda are items that are considered to be routine and are enacted by one motion without separate consideration or discussion. If the council does dis... If the council does desire to discuss an item separately, it's pulled off the consent agenda and considered in that manner. I'll open the floor for a motion to begin consideration of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Is that motion to approve, Mr. Christian? Okay, Mr. Christian with the motion to approve. Mr. Chitas with the second. All those in favor of that motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same side? All right, the motion carries seven to zero. All right, we'll move to the regular agenda. The regular agenda begins with item seven-one. It is on page 229. And I'll ask Cheryl Brock to come forward. We're going to get a brief presentation, and I know we have some people that will be leaving, will be leaving, and it'll be a good opportunity for them to leave as Ms. Brock comes forward. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a short presentation.
So as Ms. Brock gets her presentation ready, and I'm going to turn her on, this is a, we have a, tonight, a public hearing and then an item to consider, a first reading of an ordinance, and it's regarding a Texas Enterprise Zone application. We don't see these very often, and so we thought it was appropriate, or yeah, that be appropriate, that Ms. Brock give us a quick overview of this before we open the public hearing. Ms. Brock?
Yes, sir. I want to tell you a little bit about Enterprise Zone. The Enterprise Zone program is actually a state sales tax ref, a sales tax and use refund program designed to encourage private investment and job creation in economically distressed areas of the state. Essentially, that's what an Enterprise Zone is considered, an economically distressed area or, so Texas communities must not, or we must nominate, the council must nominate a company to be eligible to, for those state incentives. This is a state program. The city is not providing the incentives. It's actually being provided through state sales and use tax. If they get, they actually get designated, all your position here is you're nominating them or not, depending on your decision, to be eligible to apply for that, and we would be sending in the application. Companies must meet minimum standards on capital investment and create or retain jobs that employ a certain percentage of economically disadvantaged Enterprise Zone residents or veterans. And it can be Enterprise Zone residents anywhere in the city, not in the particular one the businesses. The program is managed by the state. Applications for Enterprise Zone projects are accepted quarterly. It's a competitive process, and the application will compete with other applications on the December 1 round. That's when this is planned to be submitted to the state for. The state has a maximum number of 105 that can be awarded per biennium. There's available 12 for this particular round. I want to tell you a little, whoops, forgot to bring my thing. I'm sorry, I'm bad about this. X Fab Texas did submit a request to the city asking that we nominate, the council nominate them for designation as an Enterprise Zone project. They're located at 2301 North University. The plan is to invest 16.9 million in mostly machinery and equipment, but about 5.3 of it will be for building expansion and renovation. This is jobs, this project will be based on jobs retained, which say there are 400, with a payroll of 23.3 million. X Fab has to make commitments in this application. They've committed to retain the 400 jobs. They have committed to that 25% of their employees will be residents of an Enterprise Zone or economically-
Ms. Brock, will you click your mouse somewhere out in the white areas there so we, so the menu goes away so we can see-
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even notice. I'm too busy talking.
Just click, click, click it right there. It should go away if you just click somewhere other than on the, maybe not.
Cheryl hit the escape key.
Escape key?
Should make it disappear.
I'm just doing odd things tonight.
It's not, it's not you. Please continue. We're okay.
Okay, sorry. I think I need to go back.
No, you're on, you're on there. That's the correct page.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where you were. You were on, I think you just talked about the second line there.
Right. They also are committing to hire under-skilled, inexperienced, disadvantaged, or displaced workers who reside in a zone. They've committed to hire minority workers in contract with minority-owned businesses, provide technical and vocational job training for Enterprise Zone residents or the same class, the economically disadvantaged, implement and contribute to a tutoring or mentoring program, work towards the prevention or reduction of criminal, juvenile crime, and make contributions to the well-being of the community. These are all included in their application. The nominating ordinance, actually, the thing with that this year, normally, we did one of these in March. It was done through a resolution because we did not have to change the ordinance. The reason for the public hearing today and for the ordinance is because there were some changes which we had to make to the ordinance, which required us to do the public hearing. And the changes are, it does continue, the ordinance does continue the city's participation. It does nominate X Fab to this Office of the Governor, Economic Development, and Tourism as an Enterprise Zone project. It provides for possible tax incentives and programs. And where it talks about this, these are things the city may provide to companies in the future. It is not, there is no commitment in this ordinance to, on incentives for locally. You're not committing incentives at all in this. These are just things, and we'll go through them in a minute. A lot of them are programs that we do through the city's budget for the citywide. They're not specific to the Enterprise Zone, so you'll see that it's very broad. It also designates a staff liaison. It directs the staff to file the application, and it just designates the effective period for the Enterprise Zone project. Enterprise Zone nominating ordinance, the changes, because of a change in the rule, we had to list any active Enterprise Zone projects that the council has nominated prior, and were actually designated. We have two. One that expires in 2020, which was the United Distribution Center. The other one that was approved in March of this year expires of March 3 of 2025, which was Tyler Technologies. We did change the liaison to communicate, negotiate with the Economic Development and Tourism from Executive Director of Budget to City Manager or his or her designee. That gives us a little bit of options. It wouldn't tie us to another specific job title, which would require us to have to change it in the future. This will make that a little bit easier. Other proposed changes are the inclusion of additional benefits that have been added that are normal operations of the city, but will provide additional points for local effort in the application. These are the incentives programs that are included in the nominating or in the ordinance, and basically jurisdiction-wide, we call them programs incentives because as you go through there, you're going to see the things the city does on a normal basis. These are considered benefits. Industrial tax abatement is an Enterprise Zone incentive, but it is also available citywide. Freeport exemption is citywide. Tax increment financing, we have three zones. Zoning changes, variances, or the city is very good at looking at those. Capital improvements in water and sewer facilities, the council is very good about providing for money to do those on a regular annual basis. Creation of parks, the city has an ongoing park improvement project related to park amenities. Road repair, you do annual road repair and projects on that. Low-interest loans for housing rehabilitation or new construction, that's Community Development Block Grant or Home Program. Promotion and marketing comes through LITA and Market Lubbock. Customized job training, LITA and Market Lubbock work with companies to help them provide job training and job creation incentives on a case-by-case basis. Job training and employment services are provided by Workforce Southlands. These are the new things that we have added. The city has done, made so many changes in the last couple of years, and especially with this building and how our operations work, that it allowed us to add these new ones, which would give more points to the company in the application. Streamline permitting, with the first floor on, in Citizens Tower and their ability to do it online, we believe we're eligible to be considered streamlined permitting. Improved police or fire protection, the city's worked very hard on the community policing model, and that benefits the companies and everybody who lives here. Community crime prevention programs is also something that we believe we can add to the ordinance. And what, the reason we're so comprehensive in the ordinance is if it is not literally stated in the ordinance, the company cannot take points for it in the application. They're very strict about it, and that's why we're listing all these. There are some Enterprise Zone-only incentives that have not changed. These are exactly the way they've been since pretty much a very long time. Commercial tax abatement's only done in Enterprise Zones. Building permit fee refunds is only Enterprise Zones. And the city may, under appropriate circumstances, sell real property owned by the city and located in the Enterprise Zones. There are several findings in the ordinance that the ordinance makes, and that is that they meet the criteria for designation as an Enterprise Zone project, X Fab, under chapter 2303. They are a qualified business, which means they're engaged in the act of conduct of trade or business at a qualified business site located in an Enterprise Zone in the governing planning jurisdiction. At least 25% of their new employees will be residents of an Enterprise Zone economically disadvantaged or veterans. There's been and will continue to be a high level of cooperation between public, private, and neighborhood entities in the area, and the designation of X Fab as an Enterprise project will contribute significantly to the achievement of the plans of the city for redevelopment and revitalization of the area. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Ms. Brock. That's a nice presentation. We were briefed on this in executive session, but council, anything that came out of what Ms. Brock had to say that causes a question? Mr. Chitas?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Brock. Just a point to clarify, really information for the public.
Yes, sir.
When you mentioned 25% of the economically disadvantaged, what are these numbers, these figures? Where do they come from?
They're literally laid out in the state statute. So it literally tells you, like, for Enterprise Zone, for instance, if it's a, to be eligible to be a zone, it's 25, 20%, you have to have 20% poverty level or above. And so it's based, a lot of the numbers are going to be based on the census data, or, I'm sorry, that's where you're getting-
That's where I was at.
Yes, it's based a lot on the census data, and it'll be the most current census, which would be the 2010 census is what most of the data is based on.
Again, just to, I know we're right, we're off at the tail end of it, but that's why it's so important-
It is.
-to fill out the census because this determines a lot, where the monies are going to go to.
It will determine what areas are still eligible Enterprise Zones once the census is done.
Now, and I know you covered it, but the enterprise, the, I'm sorry, let's go back. The people that are being employed in the disadvantaged, it's through the entire city, not a particular area or zone?
Yes, sir. They can employ, they can employ any person who is disadvantaged anywhere in the city or that lives in any Enterprise Zone in the city. And Enterprise Zones are technically, are actually block groups. They're not a big area, like, if you've been here very long, we used to have very large Enterprise Zones. The program changed in 2003. So they can actually be from any eligible block group.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Brock.
Thank you, Mr. Chitas. Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Brock. Nice overview, and thanks for your work on these kind of efforts. We very much appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Okay, the Texas Government Code requires that a public hearing be conducted by the city council in regard to the proposed participation in the Texas Enterprise Zone program, including nominating X Fab Texas, Inc., to be considered for a potential state-designated enterprise project. We will, we've had the staff presentation. I'll now open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to the council in regard to this proposed matter? Anybody that would like to speak on this matter tonight? All right, we'll close the public hearing. We'll move to item seven-two. Council, is there a motion to begin discussion of item seven-two? Ms. Joy?
To approve.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Council, are there any comments on the motion or questions on the motion that's on the All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, council, we'll move now to item seven-three. Item seven-three is the second read of a, begins a number of second read of zoning cases from the Planning Department. I believe those are items seven-three through seven-eleven. I'm going to ask Mr. Isom to very quickly run through these for us. We held, we heard these just six nights ago, and I believe only one of these received less than a unanimous vote. Ms. Isom?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 7.3 is case 804A for Tarheel Holdings LLC, represented by Hugo Reed and Associates. The request is to rezone property from single-family District R1 to two-family District R2 at 1601, 1605, 1609, and 1613 Vassar Street. Here's the subject site outlined in orange, generally located south of Vassar Street and east of North Paris Avenue. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this item, and the city council approved first reading both by unanimous votes. Staff is available for questions.
Please move to seven-four.
Item 7.4 is case 2255T for Three Wiggle LLC, represented by Keith McNeese. The request is to rezone property from local retail District C2 to commercial District C4 at 6402 Frankford Avenue. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, generally located south of 64th Street on the west, and to the west of Frankford Avenue. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request, and the city council approved first reading both by unanimous votes.
Okay, let's go to item seven-five.
Item 7.5 is case 2538M for Jay Jenkins, represented by Jay Jenkins, Jr. The request is to rezone property from single-family District R1 to local retail District C2 and local retail District C2 with specific use for a telecommunications tower at 3401 Alcoa Avenue. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, south of 34th Street and east of Alcoa Avenue. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request, and the city council approved first reading both by unanimous votes.
All right, Ms. Isom, thank you. Let's go to seven-six, please.
Item 7.6 is case 2538O for Rank Trust, represented by Lacy Nivens. The request is to rezone property from single-family District R1 to Interstate Highway Commercial at 1911 and 1905 Kelsey Avenue and 8811 19th Street. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, generally located south of 19th Street and east of Kelsey Avenue. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote, and the city council approved first reading by a vote of six to one.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Isom. Let's go to seven-seven.
Item 7.7 is case 2926D for Myers Financial Corporation, represented by AMD Engineering. The request is to rezone property from single-family District R1, specific use, to two-family District R2, north of 114, sorry, to R1A, north of 114th Street and east of Atlanta Avenue. Sorry, I think I skipped. So here we have the subject site outlined in orange, generally located north of 114th Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote, and city council approved first reading by unanimous vote as well. Staff is available for questions.
That was seven, that was seven-seven, yeah. Okay, anything on seven-seven? Okay, seven-eight, please, sir.
Item 7.8 is case 3096F for Red Canyon Development, represented by Hugo Reed and Associates. The request is to rezone property from single-family District R1, specific use to R2, north of 100, sorry, I got the general locations swapped on those two cases. This one is north of 114th Street and east of Atlanta Avenue. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, again, located north of 114th Street and east of Atlanta Avenue. Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission- Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request, and the City Council approved first reading by unanimous votes.
The other one was north of 114th also, just a little further north, right?
Yes, yes.
And a little bit, a little more to the east, okay, as I recall. You weren't wrong, Brian. You were, you just didn't know how good you were.
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's why it's the general location.
General location, that's right. Okay, Item 7.9, please.
Item 7.9 is case 3417 for Centerline Engineering and Consulting LLC. The request is to rezone property from transition District T to garden office, light manufacturing, and commercial District C4, south of 66th Street and east of Alcoa Avenue. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, again, located south of 66th and east of Alcoa. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request by unanimous vote, and City Council approved first reading also by unanimous vote.
Case 7.10, please, sir.
Item 7.10 is case 3420 for Shepherd Woodworks Incorporated, represented by Kevin Shepherd. The request is to rezone property from transition T and, sorry, from R1 and transition T to local retail District C2 at 5802 Princeton Avenue. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange. It's generally located north of Princeton Street on the west side of Frankford Avenue. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request, and the City Council approved first reading both by unanimous votes.
Okay, move to 7.11, please, sir.
Item 7.11 is case 3421 for HF and C Feeds, represented by Zach Garth. The request is to rezone property from transition District T and Interstate Highway Commercial to Light Manufacturing District at 8208 Zadar Avenue. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, generally located south of 82nd Street and east of Alcoa. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request, and the City Council approved first reading both by unanimous votes. Staff is available for questions.
Okay, counsel, anything on 7.11? Okay, thank you, Mr. Isom. Don't go far. Okay, counsel, how do you want to handle these? I know that, I know that Item 7.6 was not, you want to hold that, pull that out, Ms. Patterson-Harris? Okay. Can we consider the others collectively, counsel?
No, to consider collectively.
Okay, so that would be a motion to consider Items 7.3 through 7.11 with the exception of Item 7.6. Is there a second on Ms. Joy's motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chitas. Counsel, is there discussion on any of those zoning cases? 7.3 through 7.11 with the exception of Item 7.6? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by that same side? Motion carries seven to zero. Let's move to Item 7.6. It's on page 299. To, in order, in order to begin our discussion, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chitas. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Okay, Ms. Patterson-Harris, do you have questions or comments on this?
No, I just feel.
Still feel the same way?
Feel the same on the, on the same ground.
Okay. Counsel, other comments on Item 7, Item 7.6? Questions for staff? Now, we've got a motion and a second on the floor to approve Item 7.6. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side?
Aye.
Motion carries six to one. We'll move now to Item 7.12. It's a second reading of a proposed change to parking downtown. Unless, unless you guys want Mr. Isom to come back up, we will begin consideration with a, a motion.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Joy. Counsel, do you want Mr. Isom to come up for a moment?
Not that we don't like it.
Not that you don't, we don't, do you hear that, Brian?
Oh, I still have one more item.
I know you do. Yeah, you get to come back up. Yeah. Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor on Item 7.12. Is there further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same side? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, we'll move now to Item 7.13. Item 7.13 is on page 431. It's the first reading of a ordinance from planning. However, we've already done the public hearing. You'll recall that we did a public hearing on this, and then postponed this case to, I believe, date certain, if I recall correctly, which would have been today, November 2nd, 2020. Mr. Isom, please tell us about this case.
Sure. So Item 7.13 is case 1259A for Kyosha Jenkins, represented by Delta Land Surveying. The request is to rezone property from commercial District C4 to two-family District R2 at 1904, 1910, and 1912 Idaloo Road. We sent out 12 notification, 22 notifications, and we received one in favor and two in opposition. Here we show the locations of those letters that we received. Here's the subject site outlined in orange, generally located south of Idaloo Road between Teak and Spruce Avenues. Existing zoning on site is C4 with a mix of C4 and R2 surrounding the site. Future land use map does call for commercial in this area. And here are some photos that we've provided of the subject site and its surroundings. So the request is not in conformance with the future land use map as it calls for commercial in this area. However, R2 district is considered a suitable buffer adjacent to commercial uses and zoning. In this instance, though, interspersing the properties could cause potential nuisance issues between the two properties. So you might know the last time we had this conversation, she was reaching out to the neighbors, and she is here. If you have questions, I saw her come in. I know we've had some conversations. She has been in contact with them, but has not gotten the application submitted to rezone the two lots that are in between hers along Idaloo Road. I'm talking specifically, I believe, about these two. And so with that, if you have any questions, staff is available.
Excuse me, questions for Mr. Isom? Okay, thank you, Brian. Let's get, let's get a motion to begin, to begin considerations. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Okay, we've got a motion and second. Counsel, how many, like, I know there are a number of questions we had last time about this. I think there were some questions concerned about what Mr. Isom said about the, doing zoning, changing zoning on, on both sides of property and implications of that. I think there were also concerns about ex, the ingress and egress onto a state highway. So, Ms. Patterson-Harris, I'll start with you. Do you have anything on this?
Actually. Deal. I didn't know you were.
There you go. You're good.
Didn't know you were going to call me, Mr. Mayor.
I know it's in, it's in the heart of your district. I thought we'd start with you.
Well, I had the opportunity to visit with Ms. Jenkins, as I indicated during the time she was here previously, that I was concerned, the additional concerns that have been stated, the fact that it does not go along with the future land use and all of those things. In addition to the fact that she did not own the properties in between those, and it would really make for a, a concerning situation. The citizens that are directly, are adjacent to the properties are still in opposition, and so those things are, can still are concern for me. I think I shared that with Ms. Jenkins when we visited at that time. And my understanding is that things are still at that, that particular place, and with that, I could not support it as it is.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Other questions or comments on this?
Mayor.
Mr. Massengill.
This may be from Mr. Isom. Remind me how we're going to, the alley was going to be addressed. I've slept since then. We were, we were, it was going to, the alley was going to be the access to the properties. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, was it going to be paved?
Yes, sir. I believe it was going to be paved along with their project as they, they started construction. Thank you.
So if that's, if I understand it correctly, then, if I, I'm looking at the map on page 438, Mr. Isom, that, that a resident would either come in off Spruce or Teak to get in the alley, to access that alley. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
And the two, the two citizens that are opposed to this, the two landowners that are opposed, are those that would be roughly directly south, maybe, maybe you'd call them south and southeast a little bit, but the ones in red on that, that page, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Is Mr. Franklin here? I thought I saw him trying to hide back there.
I am trying to hide.
Thanks for coming up, Mr. Franklin. Yesterday, I spent quite a bit of time and went to this property and drove around it and noticed that we have done new paving on 17th.
Ute.
Ute.
Yes, sir.
And I believe also Teak.
Correct. That's part of the dirt road to paved road project that engineering is working on.
So that, that's, that's great.
Correct.
And I'm real tickled that we're doing right in this area, and I wanted to make note of that. I did also notice that one of the folks that were against it was because he said that it will increase crime. We're spending $6 million plus on a phenomenal police substation a sand wedge away. I don't understand how anybody can get upset when we're spending that much money on crime. I think that that's a great area for redevelopment, and I understand that there's concerns about that alleyway. But I just have to make that known that please don't bring up crime when you're going to be a block away from $6 million world-class police substation. So I can't see that that is an issue. But I wanted, Mr. Franklin, I did, I appreciate you coming up and talking about the paving project in, in those blocks. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Joy?
I'm a little bit confused, maybe the word, that they would prefer to have C4, which is the way it's owned currently, instead of R2. C4 contains some fairly objectionable uses. Is that true?
It's probably the most intense commercial district that we have right before you start getting into the manufacturing districts.
Which includes, give me some examples of what could be placed there.
Nightclub is one of the, one of the bigger concern uses. I don't have all of them memorized, but I know that is one that we usually get a lot of concerns with C4.
And the other thing that concerns me is that we're, if we approve this, we're putting R2 with 1, 2, 3, 4 that remains C4. So Ms. Jenkins is really taking a chance that somebody doesn't come along and put something really objectionable between her projects, and that's what's bothering me. I, I don't know that we're doing her a favor by approving this project, and I don't think we'd be doing a favor to the neighbors by denying the project, because there's a whole lot in C4. So I'm really torn on this one.
Mr. Chitas?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, same way, a little torn up on this one. I've been looking at the C4 to Ms., the Trail Joy, dance halls, feedlots, or feed stores, gas stations, motels, hotels, game rooms, and nightclubs, and the list goes on. It's, I think there was over 60 somewhat possibilities. I'm, I'm going to quandary on this one. I, you know, I can see, I can see the need, but then again, what, the what-if comes in there. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Isom.
Thank you, Mr. Chitas. Ms. Jenkins, Ms. Jenkins, will you come up for a moment, please? Maybe you can update us a little bit. I think you spoke briefly when you were here before, but I think we might be interested in your, maybe your success you've had or your efforts to potentially acquire the other, other property.
Yes. Kyosha Jenkins is my address. I do, I do this.
Yes.
2800 Kirby Drive, B 729, Houston, Texas. 77098.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, so I have been trying, I was in contact with the owner of the two lots in the middle of mine, and I, it was going good. I thought that they were going to sign the application before today, but in the last week, I haven't been able to reach them. The lot on the other end of mine, that's just a right-of-way, 15 feet of right-of-way that belongs to the city. But when I did talk to the owner, she stated that they wanted to do residential, but it's like a joint ownership, so she had to speak with the other family members. So I still haven't heard back from them on that.
Okay.
I know you guys are concerned that, okay, what if someone come put a club or something? But the way that the lots are owned, I just, it would just be so weird, because it's like we all own a piece of the whole tract, so for like, for it to be a house, and then someone come drop a club, it would just be weird. But of course, it could happen. So I understand why everyone is torn. But, I don't know, just, can we just change the whole thing to our? But that's all I have.
There's a lot of times we'd like to have an erasure, to do some things, okay, but we don't. So I think Ms. Patterson-Harris has a question for you.
And that's exactly what she and I had the opportunity to visit about. We don't have any control over someone else's property, and of course, you can't request a zone change for that owner. So as I stated last time, and as I stated when we, we talked, it's just, it's just not my, my willingness to split up and have different zones only a, a line apart. So it's, and, and, and of course, like I stated, you, you know where I stand, because we had the opportunity to visit, and it's just a concern, and I, I wouldn't want to put you, you or the neighbors in, into, especially something like that. If they're having some concerns about one particular thing, if there's a mixture of things, I, I'd be concerned that they'd still be, they would still have some issues with it. So that's, that's why I am, so.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. I think Ms. Joy has a question for you, Ms. Jenkins.
Well, I was sitting here thinking about the C4. You know, as long as those, actually, it's about three lots, or C4. They can put anything they want to there, and you can't do a thing about it.
I know.
And that bothers me. I think it would be a great place and would fit in with that neighborhood if all of it was going in, but it's not. So, you know, we can, I guess we can, Mr. Isom, we can deny this tonight, and she would have to wait a year to come back? Is that correct?
Because the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval?
No.
She would not have to wait the year.
Okay, so she doesn't have to wait if we deny.
And then if she were able to obtain the interior lots, we would review it, even if they had, we'd review it to see if it was substantial enough of a change to come back without having to wait the full year, so there's options for her.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I was also going to say, Ms. Jenkins even shared with me some ideas she had, and they're really nice for, for the duplex. I was going, oh, how nice they are, but again, we're still stuck with this issue of you're not being able to make all of it nice, because it, it's not yours. But I just wanted to share that her idea is, is, is really, she has some really nice ideas and plans that she'd like to put in place, but we're still stuck with someone else's property in the middle.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with Ms. Patterson-Harris. I wonder if a little more time might be helpful for you. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to just delay, but, but I'm afraid if it comes to a vote, it might not come out, you know, on the good side, and I, just an idea, I can't make that, you know, it's just a suggestion, and I can't, certainly can't make that motion, but I've seen that happen.
I just had a question.
Yes, ma'am, please.
So if I was to be able to get the two in the middle, at least, would that be substantial enough?
That would be, the two in, the two in the middle, I think, changes, the, changes it for me, particularly the way you're going to have the alley as the entry and exit, you know, that, that. You know, that would change the way I would think about it. But, you know, Ms. Patterson Harris, what would you think about it in a situation like that?
That would be clear to talk about.
Turn your mic over there.
I don't know about the right-of-ways. And again, the concern of being how the entrance would be handled. In addition for me, and I think I've said this to you, making sure that whatever would be done on the outer road, that it's nice. And it really adds to the neighborhood. I think that you could potentially really receive less pushback knowing that, how that would pan out. It's just really difficult, I believe, for citizens in that area to really visualize it because it's not been anything there in a while. So, but having seen your plans and whatnot, I think that until we see you with possession of that other property, then it's really difficult.
Okay.
For me. I speak for the council.
Mr. Massengill.
Thank you, Mayor. So, if, remind me, we've got a motion and a second on this, correct?
We do.
And if we, if someone made a motion to postpone to date certain, would we amend that motion? Just make a motion.
It would just be a separate motion.
It would be a separate motion.
Yes, that's right.
So, ninety, sixty days, ninety days? So, what would be date certain, Mr. Weaver, if we went ninety days out?
First meeting in March, right? December, no, first meeting in February, first meeting in February, which would be?
Oh, that's my birthday.
Up there you go. February, well, maybe we don't want to do it then.
What would be the following meeting, Mr. Weaver?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third of February.
How about that?
I'll come fully prepared.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to postpone to date certain February twenty-third, 2021.
Motion for Mr. Massengill, second for Mr. Griffith. The only discussion we can have is pursuant to that motion, not to the original. Counsel, are you okay with that offer for the proponent? Okay, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side. Okay, thank you for that. Good luck to you getting that worked out, okay? All right. Counsel, our final item is number, is item 714. And it comes to us from the Public Works Traffic Operations. It's a resolution adopting amendments to the City of Lubbock's Neighborhood Traffic Management Program as recommended to us by the Citizens Traffic Commission. So, let's get a motion before we begin on this. Is there a motion to begin consideration? Thank you, Mr. Chides. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got a really good and interesting item here today, and it looks like they all came up. So, we're going to start with Mr. Wood Franklin. Of course, Wood's the Director of Public Works. He has with him our two leaders in the traffic group, Ms. Sharman Owens, Mr. David Bragg. So, Wood, if you would, go ahead and get us started on that.
Sure, I'll go ahead and introduce the item and then turn it over to David Bragg, who's going to be kind of our specialist. I just, what's before you today is an adoption of a resolution adopting changes to our Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. This program's been in place for a little over five years now, and it was kind of adopted intended to work in conjunction with enforcement, mainly to allow residential neighborhoods to have a tool in their pocket that they have control over to help with curb some of the traffic situations that they might have in their specific residential neighborhoods. So, it's a good thing that we created that allows those citizens that control. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and introduce David Bragg. He's our Traffic Capital Improvements Engineer. He's worn several hats with the city, but that's what he's wearing right now. And he's going to go ahead and go over the history of the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program and also kind of highlight a lot of the changes that have happened through our Citizens Traffic Commission.
Good evening, Mr. Bragg. We're so glad you're here tonight. When I saw Public Works, I thought it was going to be Wood. But now that when I heard it was going to be you, I felt a lot better about things.
There you go. That's why I did that.
Yeah. No, we're glad you're here. You do a lot of good work, and we don't get to see you very much. So, we're glad you get to share this with us. I had a chance to look at your presentation earlier. It's, I think it's something that really matters to a lot of our residents. So, take it away.
Well, thank you. All right. Good evening. I want to start out with just a brief history of our program. So, around eight years or so ago, we were tasked with, we meaning Traffic Operations, were tasked with coming up with a program that would help curtail speeding within neighborhoods. This was due to an increase of citizen requests our department, as well as other city departments began receiving, just a large increase of those. And we wanted to try to do something to help the neighborhoods out, as Mr. Franklin mentioned. So, the first step in the process was, we did some research with sister cities, both around the state and country, other areas of similar size and places that had similar issues with speeding in neighborhoods. Based on what we came up with, with conversations with them, we developed a toolbox of, an array of quite a few different traffic calming devices that we could possibly install in neighborhood streets. We really focused in on a couple of devices as our major tools for controlling speed. One is the speed cushion, which is essentially a speed bump that's designed for street speeds. So, it's not as harsh as a speed bump you're going to come across in a typical parking lot. It's wider, it's easier to go over at a reasonable rate of speed for a neighborhood street. And in addition, we also identified what we're calling just a speed bump, which is more similar to what you see in parking lots. And this is what we use in alleyways. So, in paved alleys, that's a tool we can use to help control speeds there. So, once we, you know, kind of zeroed in on those devices, we did quite a few internal stakeholder meetings with different city departments. So, we met with Police Department, Lubbock Fire Rescue, Public Works, Risk Management, just a wide array of different departments to make sure that the devices we came up with didn't conflict with their normal operations. So, we didn't want to decrease response times in any way. We didn't want to negatively impact things such as street drainage or other items that these various departments deal with on a daily basis. So, the speed cushions and speed bumps, they both really caught a lot of steam with this group. And so, we continued down that path, as well as these other traffic calming devices. But in order to make sure that we weren't negatively impacting our streets, we actually installed some speed cushions up on Municipal Hill on Massengill Drive to make sure that, you know, we knew what we were getting into before we installed them on normal city streets. We wanted some of our own equipment to run over them a few times to make sure we weren't going to be negatively impacting vehicles or the devices themselves. So, that test proved to be pretty successful. We didn't have any issues with the devices coming up and no problems with vehicles going over them. We had them installed for probably about six or eight months or so. So, from there, we actually held a public meeting with Citizens Traffic Commission in November of 2014. And then they approved the traffic management program that's presented to them. And City Council also approved the program in January of 2015. So, we received our first application for the installation of these devices in May of 2015. And then the actual, the first installation occurred in July of 2016 for some speed cushions on Thirteenth Street. So, I've mentioned a few times, traffic calming device. So, what is a traffic calming device?
So, before you leave that slide before, Mr. Bragg, what do you call those? That's one of my favorite turns because when you're going east on Twenty-third, have to turn south on Flint, if you can keep it in the lane between those little, what do you call those?
So, we call those raised pavement markings.
Raised pavement markers.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah, oh, no is right. Yeah, okay. I was just curious.
Yeah, the idea is to try to slim down the street a bit.
Yeah, no, I get it. And it works, I think. I just was curious what you called them. Thank you. Please continue.
So, traffic calming device, you know, our department deals a lot in signage, obviously, as well as pavement markings. Traffic calming device is really more than a sign or something we paint on the street. It's a physical device that gives a visual feedback to drivers. It's something they see and make a decision on that's actually in the street, whether it's raised pavement marking or a speed cushion. So, it's what we call a self-enforcing device. So, if you see a speed bump in a parking lot, you're going to slow down as opposed to sometimes if there's a speed limit sign, folks may ignore that. So, that's right, in some cases. And these devices, what we looked at is devices or devices that are installed and designed for speed limits on the street. So, we don't want to put a speed bump, something that's harsh on a neighborhood street, you know. So, we want something that's more drivable, a speed cushion. It's a little bit wider, which will allow a driver to maintain a safe speed without speeding down the street. So, what is the process to install these devices? And again, as I've mentioned, we have several different devices in our program, but really, we just focus on speed cushions and speed bumps for retrofitting the streets that are out there right now. So, you know, the first step in the process is we require an application be filled out by a citizen. Basically, just getting contact information and then an identification of where the problem exists. From there, we do a speed study, which involves, our department puts out tube counters for a 24-hour period, and we take speeds on that street and determine whether or not there is a speeding issue. So, the definition of a speeding issue in this program is anything over 35 miles an hour as the eighty-fifth percentile speed. So, if speeding is determined to be an issue, it qualifies for city funding of speed cushions or speed bumps or any of these other devices. If it is not an issue, speeding is not determined to be an issue, the neighborhood can still install these devices, however it would be, at their expense. So, we don't want to say, well, you're not allowed to put a speed cushion on your street if you want one, but it will only qualify for city funding if there's actually a speeding issue on that street. From there, what we develop is what we call a treatment plan. This is just a design our department comes up with that shows the location of where these devices would be installed on a street. It takes into consideration driveway spacing, lot lines. We try to avoid putting them in places where you're going to back out of it if you're leaving your driveway or right in front of someone's home. You know, we're trying to strike a balance, and on some streets, it's easy, and others are a little more difficult just based on the way the lots are shaped. So, once we develop the treatment plan, we hold a citizen meeting with the applicant, and we invite them to bring anybody else on their street to the meeting to kind of help them through the process. We've seen it both ways. We've had rooms full of folks in these citizen meetings, and we've had also just one or two applicants in the room. And we go over the treatment plan, answer any questions they may have. And at that meeting, we supply them with a petition of the area that would be affected by the potential installation of these devices. So, some streets, that's just the street in question. Other streets may have cul-de-sacs coming off of that street. And so, we include those areas in the petition area to make sure anybody affected potentially by these devices has some say-so. So, from that point, the citizens have eighty, they have three months to get eighty percent of the affected area's signatures. And so, and again, we encourage, we encourage group type, you know, a situation where divide and conquer. I may know the people around my house and a few houses down, they may know others. And, you know, we try to make it as simple as possible for the citizens. And then, once we receive the petition back and verify the signatures, usually takes around a month or so to get installation of the devices out there. And let me go ahead and say, these timeframes are on years other than 2020. So, we have had some delay this year due to the fact that the traffic patterns were impacted pretty heavily from March until really, we're still seeing it, but really, we started doing counts again once the university students came back to town.
So, I think Ms. Joy may have a question for Mr. Bragg.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, let's go back to the speed study because that seems to be where all of these requests don't get granted, let's put it like that. And you said something about eighty-five percent. When you put those little measures out there, are you measuring speed itself? Are you measuring frequency of people on? Tell me what you're measuring in that speed study? Because we get asked this question all the time about why we can't get these.
So, we measure speed, but also it does a volume count and a breakdown. We get typically fifteen-minute increments of the volumes throughout the day. And when we do those, we make sure it's a normal day. So, we do them on weekdays. We make sure the weather's not goofy in any ways. We want just a normal day, just a normal traffic flow.
So, you're measuring speed, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And frequency. How do you put those two together to determine moving forward in a treatment plan?
So, really, really, for this program, for streets, we really just look at the speeds. You know, we take the volumes into consideration, but the speeds are the determining factor as to whether or not it qualifies for city funding.
So, we need to tell people just drive fast, right?
No comment. So, yeah.
Mr. Bragg's finishing, figuring this thing out. He's pretty good.
Well, and it's also worth mentioning, when we get these requests, we always ask the citizen, would you like, would you like for us to contact the Police Department? Sometimes they do. Typically, they do. Sometimes they are not in favor of that for whatever reason. But we do get the Police Department involved to run enforcement. They do a great job of helping out with these issues. Sometimes when we talk to the citizens, that's really all they want. And so, you know, they've been a huge help in this program. You know, we're good partners with them on that. So, I wouldn't necessarily tell them to speed up, but it is based on speed.
It's not frequency. It's how fast they're going.
That's correct.
All right, please continue, Mr. Bragg.
All right. So, and once these devices are installed on the street, there is a way to get them removed, and it's really just the opposite of the installation. So, we required a petition signed by eighty percent of the homeowners of the affected area at that point before they can be removed. And they also have to be out there in the streets for at least a year before we consider removal. So, how well do they work? When we first started installing these, we were pretty sure they would do their job. But, you know, until you have something out there, it's hard to say for sure. So, of the five installations of speed cushions, here's data for four of them. We don't have the most current one up here yet. But what you'll see is we definitely dropped speeds. Fifty-Eighth Street, we dropped the eighty-fifth percentile speed by almost 10 miles an hour. So, I would say it's highly effective. These devices do their job, and they do slow folks down.
Mr. Bragg, I think Mr. Christian has a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Christian? Christian?
It may not be that a quick one. This has been kind of an ongoing thorn in my side long before I became a council member. So, I'll ask you a question, how do you determine the affected area?
So, the, the affected area can sometimes be simply determined. Those are, those are the, the streets that are non-collectors, that are non, you know, they don't funnel traffic to other streets. Typically, if that's the case, then it's just gonna be that street. So, if it's a, if it's a street that, that, looking at the geometry of the neighborhood may have or does have vehicles from neighboring streets traveling down it, then we do include the neighboring streets in the affected area.
So, you could have a street that is incredibly wide, incredibly long, but it's adjacent to a number of streets that include cul-de-sacs. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, how are those people that live on those cul-de-sacs being affected by speeders on the larger and wider streets that are collector streets for you? Because I've been down this road before, and those people that live on cul-de-sacs, they could care less about whether those cushions are speed reduction devices or on those collectors. So, they'll, they, they won't even answer the door. And that's my beef with this whole process, because where you need speed bumps are on those streets that we know speeders, that we have a speeding problem. But to get this petition, 80% of the people that you need to get to sign within those impacted areas is virtually impossible. My point is, those affected areas are those streets that have speeders. Those affect, those, and that would include those cul-de-sacs. So, this whole process to me is really, quite frankly, a joke. I live on one of those streets, they're wide and long, and I've had, gone through this process two times. And every time it fails, first of all, because you put those speed, those devices that register the speed, you never get, you never qualify, you never qualify. Then you go to looking at trying to get petitions in those affected areas, it's not gonna happen. When we have street, when we have speed limits in a, on a Texas Tech campus at 20 miles an hour, but we have 30 miles an hour in residential areas, there's something wrong there.
There's no "we" to the Texas Tech, that's them.
I know, but my, my point is, my point is that speed, I don't understand why that 35 miles an hour is the qualifier, I think anything, anything over 30 miles an hour in a, in a residential area should be qualified, but the whole process is very, very convoluted.
Let's let Mr. Bragg go through the whole thing, and then we get to the end. If there's a policy, a suggestion you'd like to make, then we, I think we can consider it at that point. I mean, I could argue the other side of it, Randy, it needs to be pretty hard to put a speed bump in our streets. I mean, it needs to, it needs to be difficult, otherwise, we'd have, you know the residents like I do, that they, tomorrow morning, they'd have a speed, an application for a speed bump in front of their house. And we'd have, that's all we do is go over speed bumps. So, I mean, I can understand the position they're in, let's see where they, what they've learned, maybe there's some, maybe there's something in this that's positive coming for the, for the process, because I've heard the same complaint that you've mentioned before. Please continue, Mr. Bragg.
Sure. And so, you know, we're, we're five years into this program. We're gonna kind of look back and see, are there some things we've learned through the process? So, I've listed some items here that, that we have learned, and you'll see in the next several slides, we've applied to, or the proposed changes in the program. So, one of these is to decrease the number of options. So, right now, if you look at the packet, it's overly complicated, in my opinion. So, it's, you know, fairly in-depth, and we can, we can trim it down some to, to make it less complicated, yet still get, keep, keep the devices in there that we need. Along with that, you know, we're gonna look into refining the scope of the program. So, clarify the definition of, of street eligibility, and you'll see that in a slide here in a second. Along, along with refining the scope, we'll also better define residential streets. So, create a more detailed definition of a residential street. We've run into some areas we didn't anticipate. So, some, some streets have a few houses that, that front the street, and, and others that's the sides of the homes to the street. And currently, right now, it creates a difficult situation within the definition of the street eligibility. So, try to, try to, try to keep that from, from occurring in the future. And then, also, we want to try to encourage traffic calming features with new development. And the city as a whole, I think, the last several years, we've really made a strong push as far as changing the geometry of some of these, some of these neighborhoods and encouraging features within the neighborhood design that, that will hopefully prevent us from having to retrofit these areas in the, in the future with, with devices to help control those speeds.
What's the cost of a calming device?
Cost of a calming device?
So.
Currently?
Currently, our typical installations are between $12,000 and $15,000 to do, to do a street. It depends on the number of segments we have to install at each location and as well as the number of locations on the street.
Like a street, wanted to do one, you're not gonna charge them that much money to put one calming device?
If, currently, as the program is written, if they are eligible based on the speeds, then the city, the city funds.
But what if they're not?
Then, as it's written currently, it would be up to the citizens.
How much?
For one street, it would typically be, you know, six, six to $7,000 for, for one block. That would be most likely two, two locations of these speed cushion segments. So, I want to start out with the devices we are proposing to leave in, in our toolbox as we move forward. Traffic circle, and what we mean by a traffic circle is not, not a large traffic circle like you're gonna see at Mac Davidson Avenue X, more the smaller residential style. We haven't actually installed any of those as part of this program, because we've been focused more on slowing down the speeds on, on the straightaway, on, on the street segments themselves and not at the intersections. The streets we've handled so far, the intersection speeds have been slowed down as a byproduct of slowing down the, the speeds in, in the straight sections of the street. And then, as I've mentioned several times, the, the speed cushions, this is a photo of some that are installed on 13th Street between Quaker and Toledo. And then, speed bumps, which, which, which have been useful on, in our paved alleys. We actually have two installations of speed bumps that we've done in the past year or so. This slide shows the, the areas we're proposing to remove, the, the devices we're proposing to remove from the residential, the, the neighborhood traffic management program. So, let's start out with the residential streets. A speed table is really a, a speed cushion-type device with a flat portion at the top. So, it does the, it does the same thing as a speed cushion, however, it's, it's more costly because there's more material to it. So, we're proposing, let's, let's remove that, we haven't installed any. Speed cushions are more cost-effective, and they, they get the, they get the job done just as well. In addition, we are proposing remove a raised intersection. This is the top-left picture, it's a, it's a very costly endeavor. I'm sure it does the job, but in its place, that's, that's why we're proposing to leave the traffic circles in the, in the tools we will have moving forward. In addition to this, we are proposing to remove the collector and thoroughfare street portions of the packet. So, in those sections, we have, we have a multitude of different options, medians, chokers, full-street closures, et cetera. We're not saying we're banning medians moving forward, but as part of this program, which is the neighborhood traffic management program, we think it's really beyond the scope of what we're, what we're looking at. So, I mentioned, you know, we, we want to refine the, the definition of eligible streets.
Mr. Bragg, Mr. Chaddis has a question, I believe.
Could you please go back to the previous slide? I've got a question, I don't know if I quite understood this. The, the top-left hand, you're saying you're gonna do away with it? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
It's already in place?
No, we don't have any.
Okay, okay.
Just, just removing it is an option in our packet.
Okay, my misunderstanding, that's why, I was thinking, if it's already in place, why are we removing it? At, at an exorbitant cost? Answers my question, thank you, Mayor.
Good question, Juan.
And, and it's worth pointing out, these, these images are in the, in the current packet, they're, they're from other cities. Just, just, just so you know.
Mr. Bragg, if that one bottom image, if we had any of those, there's a couple members of this council sitting to my right who would really enjoy that street. In fact, we might have to call Mr. Chief, we might have to call Chief Mitchell to come out there and send some of his guys out there. No, no names, no names to be mentioned.
I don't think there'd be any trees left in those plants.
Please continue, Mr. Bragg.
So, the, the green and the red portions, again, we're traffic, we, we deal with green and red too much, probably, but the green and the red portions of this slide are the current requirements for a street to be eligible for, for this program. The green is what we are proposing we keep, and the red is, is what we propose we remove. So, essentially, you know, we're looking at, we, we need a street to be paved, so we have something to bolt these devices down to. The, the area needs to be a residential area, we're not interested in putting these in, in other parts of town. We want it to, to not be adjacent to open space where there are no curbs, where there's drive-around possibilities. So, in other words, if we put a speed cushion in, in front of someone's home, we don't want a vehicle going around it every day where there's no curb, to, to avoid driving over it. We don't want to install them on any street that's scheduled to be repaired or reconstructed in the next several years. We, we don't want to install them on any, any streets that are primary public safety routes. And these are, these, you know, what we're talking about here are the major streets, your arterials. In addition, we wanted to remove some of the wording that was focused more around the, the classification of the streets and focus more on the actual use of the street. So, in other words, we have wording about collector streets and arterials and that sort of thing that we're, that we're proposing we remove, and in lieu of those statements, we want to add the blue statement, which further expands the, the current eligibility of streets. So, right now, any, any street that does not have homes facing it is not eligible. So, typically, your north-south streets throughout town. So, we want, you know, we, we want to consider those as part of the neighborhood as it pertains to this program. And so, that's what this statement at the, at the bottom is, is there to accomplish, so. And this slide just shows our finished-up, proposed statements for, for street eligibility for the program. In addition to changing the definition of street eligibility, we wanted to change the wording in a few sections. So, we've had a fair amount of feedback from citizens going through this process that requested we have homeowners in, in the wording instead of residents. And so, there are a few, there are a few lines in the survey petition section of the, of the packet that, that currently say residents, and we are proposing we change it to homeowners. Also, we, we propose adding a statement in the application that requires the applicant live on the segment that, that, that they're concerned with. So, so I'm not changing, changing something on my street when I live on 3rd Street and it affects, I'm not changing something on 1st Street and I live on 3rd Street, you know, so. And with that, that's, that's what I have to present to y'all tonight, do y'all have any more questions?
So, let's go, let's go back to Mr. Christian, because I sort of got him, I interrupted him a minute ago, but I wanna, I want, I want to have more of a discussion about the affected area, okay? And, because that sounds to me like it's a little more art than it is science. Everyone's a little bit different, is that, is that, is that fair?
That's correct, it's, it's, it's not an easy, it's not always an easily agreed-upon area.
So, how does the Citizens Traffic Commission feel about this? I mean, I know you interface with them, and we rely on them to make recommendations to us for, for a number of items, including speed limits and items around safety. But what, what do they think about this affected area, have you ever had a discussion with them about it?
We, as far as the affected area itself, we've never really gone too deep into it other, other than this is the requirement, and, and this is what we, you know, what, what, what we ask citizens to, to do. And it is difficult to come up with. Some, some of these streets are very easy to determine, "Oh, yeah, it's just gonna affect this street." Others, others may be collector acting streets that, that have other, other side streets that funnel onto them. And so, the idea is to let, let anybody who's going to have to drive down that street daily have some sort of say-so in, in, in how it's going to be used. We do have at, at least one current installation that has cul-de-sacs coming off of it that, that were included in the affected area, it's 125th Street between Indiana and Flint. And so, that, that street has some cul-de-sacs that, that come off. I have it right here, but, yeah, we do have some cul-de-sacs there that, that, that were included in the, in the affected area. Looks like there are three cul-de-sacs off of 125th Street.
Mr. Christian, you want to continue?
I think there's several parts to this, in my opinion, of how you determine an affected area. You have an affected area, but first and foremost, you have an affected street where speeding takes place, or the potential for speedings takes place. That's where the problem is, or where those people live on that street 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And the people that live a couple of blocks away in a cul-de-sac or some sort of dead-end area, they don't really have as much skin in the game, if you will, as those people that are on that street where the speeding takes place. I think you're right, Mayor, is, is it an art or is it a science? Well, maybe there's a little science that should be applied to this. Should there be more weight given to the, to the signers of the petition that are right in front of and live on the affected street? And I'm just flying with this right now, versus those people that live in the affected area? Because those people that live in the affected area, their kids aren't playing on that street where they're speeding going on. All they use, that, that affected street where speed bumps really need, need to be there, all they want to know is they want to get on that street and be able to haul, like you know what, to Slide Road or to Frankfurt or wherever, and the day-to-day living on that street where speed takes place has no bearing on them except for maybe two or three minutes, five minutes at max a day when they're trying to get to a major street like Frankfurt or Slide. So, that's my problem with it, and how it's calculated, that it's not calculated according to what's really the speeds where that area where the speed takes place, it's all of these other people that are live within that affected street. And, and I'm sorry if that, but this is just off the fly about how I'm. And, and I'm sorry if that, but this is just off the fly about how I'm, how I feel about this, but I've been there before. The people that don't, do not live on that affected street but live in the affected area, they don't really care about signing the petition because it may slow them down a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Christian. Let's go to Ms. Patterson-Harris and Mr. Chides.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick question, and I hope you don't notice the frustration in my voice as we have this conversation. How many of these traffic controlling devices have we, uh, put in place in this city?
So we have, we have five installations of, uh, traffic cushions and, uh, those, those average about four devices per, per street.
So we'll call them areas then? So about four, four to five since 2014?
Since, uh, 2015.
So that's roughly one a year in a city this large? And, 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 and I hear frustration from citizens all the time. I get frustrated with the speeders and all of that as well. Uh, but my deal is, is that when we're doing the studies, we have these big old boxes up there telling people what the traffics, what the speed is. Am I correct?
When we do the traffic, the, the speed studies for this program, uh, all you'll see on the side of the street is a, a small box about the size of this, size of a laptop, maybe four or five inches tall, and then the, the tube counters across the street.
So we're not having the big boxes that tell the speed?
That's correct.
So that means that that, that neighborhood didn't get a speed study then? We'll talk. Because, and because I have tons of citizens in different areas that have, uh, begun requesting some of the applications. And they're like, well, I, I turned it in and they're supposed to do a study. So they're thinking when those boxes come, of course, that, that causes people to slow down. Uh, people are sharp enough that when they see things, they know what's going on, so they'll slow down. So I don't know if there's, there's this magical way to do it, but I know that you have a whole lot of citizens out there who are frustrated because they don't feel that they've been heard with regards to the issues that they have. It's Indy 500 on some streets. I'm serious. And, and, and there's, and it's nothing to joke about because people are frightened to death with the way that so many citizens, so many other citizens have began driving, uh, through neighborhoods. Let me ask you this question. What types of roadways, you know, the little yellow bumpy things that you were talking about that are in the center? What type of roadways can they be placed upon or administered on, whatever you call it?
So those-
Where would you put those?
We, we, we place those in spots that we do not intend for them to be driven over. You'll see those sometimes in lieu of a median at larger intersections. Uh, they, you can drive over those. When we place those, uh, out there, they're, they're, they're not designed to be placed across the street. They're really not.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, for-
But they're designed to somehow slow the traffic is what you're telling me?
Well, depending on how they're installed, so, so, uh, the first slide, the, the, the image in, in, in that slide is what you're referring to. So what, what they do there is by, they, they create a presence in the road that, that sort of gives you a feeling of it's, it's more narrow.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that, that was installed, uh, actually not as part of, not, not a part of this program. We, we do other things as well, uh, as situations come up, but, but-
So we don't use that?
We, not typically. That's correct. As far as the counting devices, so, uh, you touched on the, the radar speed trailers that we have, that, that, that give you a, a feedback of your speed as you're going by those. So we do though, we do install those. Uh, we, we have a schedule for, for places, you know, around schools and that sort of thing. We also install them, uh, by request for streets. We do not use those to count for this program because they typically slow speeds down. Um, so, so folks see that thing and they see their speed and they'll, they'll slow down while it's out there. But we want to catch them for this program really going a more true speed, uh, so.
Well, the, the reason I ask because there was a request made by a citizen and, uh, because I referred him to, uh, Public Works and, and whatnot, and he sent his application is, and not long after that, after he submitted everything, that was placed there. So he was under the impression that that was the speed study. So it doesn't sound like we've even done the speed study in this area. And, and, and that's, that's, that's some of what I'm hearing from citizens is that, hey, I got the application, I submitted it and nothing, nothing else happened. So I want to make sure that we're making sure we're following through. And if we have received a request for an application from citizens, are we following up with them to make sure that we're walking them through the process so that we can assist them, that we do?
So it, it's worth pointing out, over the summer when we were not doing speed counts with our tube counters, uh, we were still installing the, the radar speed trailers as we were getting these sorts of requests. Um, so it may, uh, the situation you bring up may be, um, an area where, where we didn't do the speed, the tube count, speed counts, uh, because, because the numbers were getting thrown off by COVID, uh, but, but, but we did put a speed trailer out at that time.
Which slows everybody down?
That's right.
Or should?
It should.
No, it don't because I, I sped like this. Uh-oh, you weren't supposed to do that. Okay. And I, I'm, I'm just as frustrated as some of the citizens are because a lot of them feel that it's getting them nowhere. And maybe that's a conversation that we have, that we make sure we're having the appropriate communication when citizens are indicating that they have these concerns. I don't know if anybody else has had-
Yeah, I, I, I think you make a good point. I, I have an idea. I want to hear from Mr. Chides. I want to hear from Mr. Massengill. Um, I, the, the, the resolution they're asking us to adopt really is much more cleanup than anything else, okay? What I'd like to do is then tee this up for a work session so we can come in and have a little more, little, I mean, deeper dive about what potentially we could do, because I'm hearing it, I'm hearing, you know, diff, um, some pretty passionate voices here. I do think that if, uh, speed enforcement's got to be part of this too, because there's a sort of a fine line here between, you know, safety and of a neighborhood and, and, you know, this, actually just speeding. And, and so like we were just talking about Toledo, you're not going to put these on Toledo, you know? I don't, I don't think it's, I think it's too wide to do it there, but we got problems on Toledo with the, the pace people drive. I think that's why you did what you did on Flint, on parts of Flint. So, uh, let's hear from Mr. Chides, then Mr. Massengill. Mr. Chides.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bragg, uh, the last slide you showed, you were talking about changing the verbiage from residential to homeowner. I, I, I question that because now if it comes to signing a petition, the people that are renting property can't sign the petition unless you're a homeowner? Question.
And so, uh, this is really based on feedback we've received from, from those getting the petition signed. So, uh, those, the citizen representatives out there, um, we've had issues where, uh, renters have, have either signed or not signed and then, um, moved, moved out of the area and, and, uh, it, it creates some tension in the neighborhood with those that are on the opposite side of that and-
I, I can understand that, but at the same time, my concern is a speeder doesn't discriminate whether you're a renter or a property owner. I, I, I would like for this policy to be somewhat all-inclusive of the neighbors that , that live on that street, you know? Because again, that, that person that's renting that property, their children walk on those sidewalks or across that street, the danger still exists for anyone that lives on that block. So I'm, I'm questioning the, the, I don't want to leave anybody out when it, when it comes to safety. And if you're a rental, if you're renting property for whatever reason that may be, that speeder still has an impact on you when they run into your car or your children or yourself. So I, I, I'm, I'm having a difficult time leaving or omitting resident and replacing with homeowner because now we're saying this section of the public is now excluded. Am I, or did I miss something there?
Well, it's, you know, it's definitely, it's an, it's an issue that, that I can see both sides on and, and, yeah, it's, uh-
Well, if I were going to err, I would like for it to be on the safety side. And I believe excluding, again, I, I would like to see residents left there and not replaced with homeowners because to me, resident is all encompassing. It, it's all inclusive. But that's my personal opinion on this and I, I would hate for it to come back on us and say, hey, you, you left us out. You know, we're paying rent or for, or, or property taxes that are included and you're leaving us out in this argument. That's just my personal opinion. I, I just don't want to be leaving anybody out when it comes to safety. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chides. Mr. Massengill.
Thank you, Mayor. So do we know how many applications come in or get started that, if we've gotten to five?
So in the five years we've had this program, our department has received, uh, around 230-
Okay.
-speeding requests. Of those requests, uh, we, we always go over this program with them. Of those requests, we received 70 applications back-
Okay.
-to, to proceed, you know, with the speed study.
And then a lot of times they probably don't get past the speed study is probably, Wood knows probably the ones I'm thinking about. You know, I've, a couple of these are in my district. 125th Street, I can't remember if that happened after 2016. So, you know, my experience, you know, I, I've talked to several people about starting the application. It makes me think of, makes me wonder where some of those are. I also know that as many people as I get call a lot of times to advocate for these after they get installed, I get a handful of people call that are mad about them.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I know we can't make, and I've, I've had some that have made their own speed cushions.
I know you did. Yes, you have.
So, um, anyway, I just think that's interesting how many, that, that's a testament to how many die on the vine, you know? If we had 70 something and, and we, we've ended up with four or five projects. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bragg. Um, good work. Thank you for what you've presented here tonight. So council, we, uh, we have a resolution in front of us that would streamline the current process. I do believe that I hear some, uh, concern about the, maybe looking at backing away and looking at the overall process. Uh, I think, um, I think we can get this on a work session within the next 60 days, you think, Mr. Atkinson? Is that, don't, don't you think that's doable?
Yes, sir, I do. And I've, I've got four broad, uh, topic areas that I think we can work on. One is the discussion generally of the area versus the specific location. I think possibly some, uh, we could do better examples of how we actually check the speed. When do we use a speed trailer that's visible? When do we use the counters that are not so visible? Um, I'm interpreting some questions about the petition process that's somewhat tied to the area discussion. Uh, the process is lengthy. Uh, the process is lengthy and this would be from initiation to verification, then how long are, are we looking at? So within those broad topic areas and any more that you may have, I think, yeah, give us two months and we can get back.
Add cost to that too, please.
Got you.
So let's see, let's, let's go to, um, Ms. Patterson-Harris, then Mr. Christian.
There was an indicate that, uh, it would not include, uh, roadways that are, that school grounds are on? If I'm not mistaken, I think that's-
Uh, to clarify, that's only areas where there is no curb. So if there's no curb and a vacant area adjacent, uh, it, it's not eligible just because, uh, folks will drive around. In fact, I, I think the homemade, uh, cushions you may be speaking about, they had drive-around issues that they added even more homemade things that-
I think we removed their cushions. That's a really, really special situation out there, but they, they built them and I believe we removed them.
So it's-
So that, that's when school grounds-
That's right. So, so if you, if you have a school with, uh, a curb and gutter around the school, it will qualify.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would like to refer back to Mr. Chides' comment on the replacement of residents versus homeowners. That's very, very bothersome to me because if you're someone that's trying to make your numbers on these petitions and you go knocking on doors, you may not be talking to the homeowner. And I think that just complicates the process of getting enough signatures for that petition, especially in areas that might have more renters than owners. You know, it just seems like it should be residents as Mr. Chides is suggesting versus I, I-
That's, that's, that's not what I, I think you may have misunderstood. I'm saying that the renters are just as equally as important as the homeowner.
Oh, that's what I'm saying.
They have children also.
No, I'm agreeing with you.
I'm saying we, we can't dis, we, we can't separate it was what my, is what my argument is. We have to, we have to, we have to include resident, residents period is my argument. Residents period.
No.
Not homeowners because now we're excluding a certain population.
I think you misunderstand. I'm, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, good. Because if, if you look at my district, over two-thirds of the households are rental property and that's well over 10,000 households. So what do we tell the people, those, those 10,000 households? You're insignificant? You don't merit speed bumps or? I, I'm sorry, I, I can go all the way-
Well, let me just finish. What I would say, what I would feel more comfortable with if, if we amend this and remove that bullet point and leave it as residents right now if we're moving forward.
I, I, I can't agree with residents. Oh, residents, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, resident, perfect.
Yes.
Homeowners-
Where you leave it as residents.
Standing alone homeowners, I'm not in agreement with that.
Yeah.
I, I'm concerned, uh, is there a legal issue on this perhaps? You don't think so?
There's previously residents. So what I'm suggesting, just leave it as it was.
Uh, I don't think there's a legal issue. I think the wording obviously is not precise. It sounds like, uh, the council, the council can weigh in on that. So the wording may, may, may need to be tightened up. I don't know that there's any legal issue-
Okay.
-that the occupant or the homeowner of a home has any particular right to participate in this process. So I think it's just a matter of the council coming up with language that they're comfortable with and reaches the, the group that they're talking about. They could use some tightening up. I'm not sure there's a legal issue really. This is an internal process that the city's using for this, and so you have the authority to, to style it as you wish.
So are you suggesting occupant?
Well, that's just a word of the case in mind.
Okay.
Um, you know, when you start using words, it's important to know what they mean. So I would hate to throw a word out without us really looking at what it means. Residents, if resident was the prior word, maybe, maybe that's the safer word to go to.
Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. The, um, one, one thing I'd, I'd like to bring up, and that is, uh, enforcement. I've had a couple in my district that did not qualify. But it was amazing how well the Police Department of Lubbock, Texas activated and set speed traps up. And over a period of time, those bad actors on those particular streets went away. It's not always the total speed of the traffic on a daily basis.
That'd be speed enforcement, not a trap. Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be a better?
I apologize.
Yeah, okay, good. I just want to make sure that we got that-
Sorry, chief. I've, I've been in traps before. Thank you for qualifying that, Mayor. But seriously, you know, it's, it's, it's not always- But seriously, you know, it's, it's, it's not always, everybody's driving 14 miles over the speed limit. A lot of times, Mr. Christian, it, on that particular street, it's just a few bad actors that are getting away with it. And so when we go down this trek of talking about this in work session, I think it's going to be very advantageous to have our police administration involved in this.
Thank you.
I would, I'm going to move to postpone this discussion until such time as we have had a work session. And I very much want that to include the Citizens Traffic Commission and our Police Department. So that's, if that's a motion.
I think the motion was to postpone. I think the rest of it was just a suggestion to staff.
Yeah.
Mr. Weaver.
I was just going to point out if you, if you postpone.
Point it indefinitely, then you could bring it back whenever you wish.
Okay. We'll postpone indefinitely.
Are you okay with postponing?
With postponing indefinitely?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got a motion from Ms. Joyce, second from Mr. Griffith to, to postpone Adams 714 indefinitely to be potentially considered after we have a work session on the same topic. Okay? All right. Any discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely? Okay, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side? Okay. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, guys. It doesn't mean that we're not, I think it's, it's a, it's a topic we don't ever get to talk about, as you know, and it's something that undoubtedly we hit a few soft spots. So it's an opportunity to keep working on this. Give Mr. Mr. Griffith a chance to get out of that trap, so. All right. I believe that finishes our business, completes our business tonight. Ms. Garza?
Yes, it does.
Mr. Weaver, you good? Okay, Council, it's 7:15. It's a great day in Lubbock, Texas. We're adjourned.